All the board of the Hancock County Commissioners Special Meeting for June twenty-third. Come on. Do I, yeah. Did I say, should I?
You said you.
Where's your.
I'm gonna move to adopt the agenda as presented with the exception of our movement items ten D fifteen E.
Double ten D fifteen E. Except for the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 The public comment. See, can you come? Proven with the minutes.
I'm gonna move to approve the minutes of the July second Commissioners Regular Meeting as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, do you have your question?
I'm gonna move to recognize and thank Natalie Walker for fifteen years of service to Hancock County.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Fifteen four.
Fifteen four.
Stick around if you want to. Get back.
Thank you, Jerry.
All right. Now, yes, presentation of Hancock County. My planning commission.
Gary Barney, I'm the executive director of the Hancock County Planning Commission. I talked with Michael earlier about just being here today to talk about what we've been doing over the past two years, what we've got planned in the upcoming year, and then some of the gaps that we're seeing within the services that we provide to municipality. I came in September of twenty-twenty-two, and as many of you probably know, the planning commission had some real ups and downs and challenges. Since then, we've gone from just myself to holding building, we've got two of the full-time staff members, we've got one part-time person that's looking to the full-time, and we've got for three years, the full-time basically hard. So, we've made a lot of leaps in terms of our capacity and the work that we've been doing. We've been fighting through this huge wave of comprehensive plans. Hancock County is leading in a number of comprehensive plans in the entire state, which is exciting, but quite challenging. And so, we've really been focused on helping the communities that don't have a huge budget for technical assistance. We've also been focusing on building out our housing programs and services. We're working on a housing needs assessment, providing workshops and trainings and other options for increasing housing availability in a county and just kind of dealing with some development pressures as well. We've also been, the state had a big housing legislation, L D two hundred and three, that came out and has been dealing with helping municipalities for important assistance and compliance. Taking up a bit of time. We've also been, you know, H T C has already had a big transportation program. We've been continuing with that, a lot of bike investment programs, projects that communities are interested in. For safety projects, also dealing with the impact of these most recent storms. And then the mapping supervisor program. So, they've been doing a lot of transportation early at work. We've also been focusing on prepping our workshops and training programs. We did quite a few of those last year, you know, some of the great like planning board basics, ordinance development, municipal uses of G I S and acting services, things like that. Doing monthly newsletters, some of those basics, just getting the word out where we have a little capacity as we do, how can we commit to that. And then some other broadband work, a lot of it's been focusing on municipal level. When I say broadband, I'm talking with the technology as well, and we have a lot of municipalities that are struggling with just some of the basics, like, you know, documents and what they sort of documents, they've got a lot of photocopies, you know, hybrid meetings, websites, things like that. To try to work for and find resources and funding for those types of projects, which is challenging. And then, yeah, we've been a part of a lot of like state by competition. And future planning. And so, for, that's kind of what we've been working on the last few years, also just a lot of like getting our internal. Like the internal organization back together and I guess they've been building to this pretty huge, huge challenge for us. Moving into the next year, we have a lot of similar programs, you know, comprehensive planning, transportation. We're also working with D O T, intertransportation officers, one A quarter management plan, for assistance that, SCOTUS, any five A quarter management plan. We just received funding along with some of the other regional planning organizations for a regional coenforcement officer position through our office, which is really exciting. We're still working to see exactly what that program's gonna look like. But we're, you know, having conversations with our municipality, and that's set to start in October, so that'll be a three-year program. And kind of thought is it's fully funded for three years, but transferring it to something that's municipal funded. So, this is our pilot program, getting things set up. So, that's a big thing that we're excited about. And then our environmental programming, so we just hired an environmental program, environmental planner earlier this year, and she's been really focused on, you know, around the deal, these and these other big projects. The thing, the number one thing that we're, one of my biggest goals is solid waste programming, as, you know, H T P C has hazardous waste collection done and a pretty strong solid waste program for many years. And that's something that we've been struggling to bring back. The federal funding for solid waste programming has shrunk quite a bit, and it's a thing I get the most calls about. So, we've been really trying to bring our hazardous waste collection back and then municipality, which are going with the cost of solid waste, so we need your help with that. So, a lot of our work is just continuing into the next year. We have some vulnerability assessments related to flooding and sealleval rise, so identifying areas of critical infrastructure that's gonna be impacted and then coming up with an adaptation plan, how to handle that. We also have several towns that are interested in, you know, SCOTUS area league of towns, and so helping to facilitate those conversations similar to what N B I is doing, what other communities have done. We've got, I think I might have mentioned this, but as communities are looking at L D two hundred and three and other new ordinances for the state, use of legislation, they're also just reviewing their ordinances and realizing there's a lot of gaps and issues that they need to deal with. And so, we've got a huge wave of interest in cities suggesting comprehensive of their ordinances. So, that's a big piece of what we're looking at. And then kind of moving into some of the gaps that we're seeing, as I, we did a municipal needs assessment over the past year. We had ninety percent of municipalities responding to that, you know, a mix of select board members, line board, town managers, administrative assistants, and really that it was just, you know, what is the biggest challenges? We asked about the services they would be from H T P C. The two biggest ones we saw were housing and climate change. Housing relating to, you know, the affordability and availability of housing, infrastructure needs for that housing, dealing with development pressures and how to handle that. And then climate change, mostly focused on adapting to climate change, sealleval rise and the flooding. There was some talk about, you know, some interest in some of the rebel programs or reducing emissions, but overwhelmingly, it was about adapting to these types of storms that we're seeing. Solid waste was another big one, and then another overarching theme was kind of the municipal capacity, expertise and technology piece of this. We have a lot of aging municipal officials and staff, you know, struggling with coenforcement officers and just like keeping and finding, finding the support that they need and some basic skills that comes with that training. So, we've been trying to step into the trainings where we can, which has been a huge issue. And then with all the funding, the federal funding, a lot of our small municipalities, even our governments, are really struggling to keep up with the funding that's coming through and applying to this, managing federal funds, managing all these products that are coming through when they don't run this out. But it's just been a real challenge. And then, as I mentioned, like some of the basics, like hybrid meetings, like just like the taxes of M Y C, like software and websites and the document managing, help that. We've also seen, I've been seeing a lot of requests for G I S services, we're somewhat limited in what's being offered right now, we've got that following staff number coming on, but a lot of towns haven't had their parcel mapped since like two thousand and five or two thousand and eleven, when there was a very good way to federal funding. So, that's something that we've been seeing a lot of, you know, interested in, you know, doing inventory system, all kinds of stuff that are at other rolling, bringing, growing these plans through G I S. And as I mentioned, the ordinance development and review process. It's just a lot of like the town branch, but right now, it's doing a huge overview and right, comfortable, and we should incorporate some, you know, whiseling measures into the way news sources, but it's a pretty big project for a very small town. So, we're seeing a lot of that. And then, I mean, there's some other themes, you know, dealing with the development pressures and population changes and aging populations, you know, interest in economic development, childcare, some of these other things. Also, just navigating the legislative world, I mean, we're struggling to keep up, you know, planning is struggling to keep up with the speed of this last legislative session. And that's, that's some of the big gaps and work that we're seeing, and just wanna take a chance and talk to you, sort of based on.
Where's your new location?
It's on the Foxport Road, so do you know where the Unitarian Church is?
Yes.
We, we're, there are landmarks, so we're in the old Loves and Fishes Building.
Little tiny one, that's big enough?
Yeah.
No.
But it was a temporary situation. It's kind of one of my next big projects.
I was interested to hear about your efforts with Rodney.
Yeah.
I mean, don't be called, you're in, you're in, we had a very expensive offering, and you were aware of that.
I, I am, and honestly, it just came down to capacity where we were at at the time. You know, we've been, we've been kind of following up and helping building, and we just didn't have a lot of resources, so.
We just keep in touch.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Because another one is, is that, is intrigued to see the county-wide C E O of running the coenforcement.
Yeah.
And we presently have a county-wide animal control.
Yeah.
And we're finding that works very well. Kind of intrigued, maybe that same process could work with C E Os, where you're getting ready to fan that off to an agency, so, keep in touch with us on that.
Absolutely.
Maybe something that we would entertain and look at.
Yeah, and that'd be great, and that's part of why I wanted to come to this, you know, benefit of being here, and I haven't really talked to you guys all that much yet. So, I'm very, very interested to hear more, I heard a little bit about the animal control model and how that's worked.
I have the exact same question, that, that the regional coenforcement, you said is funded by the state for three years?
It's, so it's through the FEMA building, releasing an infrastructure and communities grant, and it's through FEMA, yeah.
Okay, and then, so after three years, you're gonna have to take that over, or somebody's gonna have to.
Yeah.
And my question is, Mr. Clark, through one model, have you considered what it looks like after three years and if you could elaborate on that?
We've been talking about it, frankly, it's, we just found out that we got the funding. So, it's been this process, we've got some meetings set up with the other regional planning organizations in the next month to really sit down and talk about what exactly this job description looks like and what funding model's gonna look like long-term. That kind of fairly counts like governments, there's been a lot of work around this, so we're really lucky in the fact that we're hoping to build on something that we've been doing.
Cause my guess is that there's other, there's other models of the state for this.
In the state, not, not so much, around like your country, we've been looking at. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Reach out anytime.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner Austin. In your packet is the letter from Mr. Gim, and then I received the association documents and sent you that in an email. And looking the, this Eagle Island Association documents, it's an eight-page document with a lot of legalese. On page four. Article two point two D, it refers to Hancock County's tax records. And Hancock County doesn't do taxation, Main Revenue Service does taxation. I would think this should have said Hancock County Registry of Deeds. But that's more of a, an association issue. On page six, item five point one is the only place where it mentions fire in the whole document. And in that the Eagle Island Association can have a committee for fire and safety and a committee for caretaking. But the big one is on page seven, article seven, indemnification and insurance. I would like to forward this to the Hancock County's attorney of the commissioner's choice to review this and make sure Hancock County is not gonna have any liability in this. Whether it's done through this document or done through any funding that we give them, but we need some assurance that there's no way anybody can include Hancock County in a lawsuit.
My feeling, I'm not sure what we're doing. It seems like this needs to be reviewed by, further reviewed by Michael and Millard and possibly the attorney and. I don't know, it just doesn't feel right yet, is that, is that fair assumption, Michael?
I mean, obviously, since we just got this this morning, I haven't had a chance to even.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'd looked at it, cause, but I'm not even sure what we're looking at yet or, and what's being requested of us.
Aye.
Yes, well, that, that's my assumption, but nobody's really said that yet, and. I, I was glad to see that there was a vote somewhere on the Eagle Island, because, you know, I've reached out, a couple residents have reached out, you know, questioning this and. I don't know, it just doesn't feel right yet for me, and I don't know what action we could possibly take with this.
Well, I think the reason it doesn't feel right is we're dealing with a private entity, not a municipality. What we need to know is, is that, does this document give us the protection? From a private entity that we would have with the municipality, whereas being named in the lawsuit, there's no way we can control that. It's a matter of whether we should be protecting this document, if we are named. I agree with you, we should send this back and make sure that all the eyes are guarded and teased.
Michael, you're not making any recommendations. And Camilla, what are you?
My recommendation would be to forward it to the county's attorney for his review.
Yeah, we, starting out with Michael.
Yeah, I can order it on it here.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do you have anything else, Miller?
That's all I had for today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, you have to get it for her.
Good morning.
Morning, Larry.
So, we had a meeting with the Airport Advisory Committee last Thursday to go over the airline proposals. I believe I forwarded you the proposals. The advisory committee recommended Cape Air for a four-year contract with their option B, which was a ramp-up, ramp-down scenario in the schedule. Versus an abrupt change mid-June and mid-October, which seems to be probably a better scenario. Cause, you know, there is, there is the travel there, so it, that, that's what they ended up going with, with, so I guess it's looking for your support on. The Cape Air option, and then we can get it off to the powers-to-be at the D O T by Friday. So, this thing kind of had to come together fairly quickly. They only gave us a month total to, to review this, go over it, get a meeting. And quite frankly, our meeting, we, we couldn't get enough members together for the first meeting, so we had to postpone it a week, that's why everything was kind of rushed.
Can we raise any?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with this. They've been good to us over the years, you know, they stepped up when we needed some passengers, they stepped up and added some flights, added some seats towards the end of the year. And, you know, they're good for the community, you know, we got the letters of support from both Ellsworth and Bar Harbor Chambers. You know, it seems to be a pretty good fit over the years. You know, there's a couple of things that, you know, would be nicer to have, but, you know, when I look for airlines out there, there just doesn't seem to be anything that really fits the bill and the airport size anymore, so. One of the big things was, you know, we, we got looking at baggage, and one of the main phone calls we get is, is baggage, where's my, where's my suitcase? And the other operators, airplanes, once I started looking at baggage capacity, were significantly smaller, so that was just gonna even be a, a more of an issue.
I don't know, it appears to be this increase in the off-season flights per day from three to four, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, so it, it's a.
Is there an increase?
The shoulder seat, the shoulder seasons, they're trying to put more seats in those shoulder seasons.
That's the off-season?
Yeah, that would be the off-season, yeah, yeah, that would be that whole late October to early November, and then, you know, the one. Then in the springtime, they do the same thing.
Oh, I see, it goes back three flights a day after November.
After, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's the ramp-up he's talking about.
Yeah.
Is forty-two flights during the peak season the same?
Uh, fifty.
Six.
Six, right, yeah, fifty-six flights during the peak season. So, what we're gaining is some extra flights in that season, you know, just before and just after. You know, the two, three weeks prior to.
Thank you.
So, I'm gonna move to approve the letter to Michael Martin, United States Department of Transportation, Central Air Service, as presented and to authorize the chair to sign on behalf of Hancock County.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, second one, thank you. Second one is our sewer issue we've got going on. Just wanna, blessing, I guess, to continue on, we got, we got the, we got the sewer pumps, we just need to get somebody to replace them, and of course, that just turns into, we need electrician, we need to get the sewer pumping people out here again. So, it's just, it, it's looking like probably in the vicinity between eight and ten thousand when we're all done. And we have that tied up in reserves for, you know, the. Yeah. My notes, but yeah, we had it, there's twenty-two thousand dollars in like the T B upgrade account, reserve account, I believe, so there's, there's plenty of money there to, to take care of it.
I'm gonna move to approve manager, proceed with the process to obtain the equipment and outsource the work to fix the sewer issues in the airport.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And, and the third one, we're, we're still talking about bathrooms. This was the bathroom remodel several years ago, there's been a, a lot, a little bit of a laundry list. Uh, this is, this change order is just to clear that up, and they have to get it into us by October, August tenth, I believe, is when the grant runs out. So, Jacobs has been a little slow on getting things done, and now we're up against the wall to get it, get it done. There's a, a heat and, there's a ventilation problem in those bathrooms, and that's the main thing, the ventilation, there's weird locations of the hand dryers right above the heating element, the heaters, so, you know, the water's just going down on that, it's gonna rust those out. We're trying to get something to deflect the water from the hand dryers. Uh, then there's a little privacy wall, we have a, a little issue with the door open in the men's room. So, that's what this one's all about.
I'm gonna move the change order to A I P three twenty-three zero zero six dash fifty dash twenty twenty, terminal building restroom remodel in the amount of nine thousand three hundred and seven dollars and authorize the chair to sign.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And looks like we're gonna stop the work on the crack ceiling and marking until after Labor Day, it's just, it's been an ordeal weather-wise and everything else, and we just don't wanna tie up traffic. Uh, so that, that's a work stoppage going in today until after Labor Day, but other than that, all is good out here.
It looks like you got quite a bit of it done anyways.
Yeah, that runway looked really good, I flew also this weekend, and it really, yeah, really sticks out with that new paint on it.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, wow, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney shares office.
I believe the, those three items, the sheriff's comments, maybe assign those and promote them.
So, we're to take action, or do you want to speak to them?
I don't have a smoking there.
Move to acknowledge the sufficiency and approve, approve the sheriff's bond as requested by the district attorney.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Same thing, moving forward the next two.
Yes.
I'm gonna move to acknowledge the sufficiency and approve the chief deputy's bond as requested by the district attorney.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm gonna move to acknowledge the sufficiency and approve the deputy's bond as requested by the district attorney.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, the title of the resignation of Mr. W, as administrative assistant. Been with us for less than a year in that capacity, took out this almost three years. Moving on to follow some of her dreams and let the commissioners recognize her contributions.
So, I'm gonna move to accept the resignation of Misty Emerson, administrative assistant to the DA's office, effective August ninth. Thank her for her service to Hancock County and we're sure that's good.
Second motion. In favor?
Aye.
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 Read to the next item, which is request to hire a trade assistant to the DA's office. Has changed in the agenda. There's two issues with this, number one, permission to hire, expiration to ten-day advertising period, and two, to hire a candidate with significantly greater pay rate than ordinary. A whole bunch of reasons for that. Basically, the biggest one is timing, Misty is leaving at certain time where the company is in the winter season. Will leave the next commissioners' meeting, which is not until August.
Set first week five.
And then, the problem there is I wouldn't be able to present anyone for additional two weeks. Two weeks or one week. But in any event. If I present the next commissioner's. if I present at the next commissioner's meeting, we're not gonna have sufficient time to train a candidate. In ordinary circumstances, most individuals require at least two weeks, advance notice that their current employers or party coming to be recruited, which would basically put us well over beyond Misty's party. I don't have time to train somebody. I don't have a position where I can train somebody in that hole. And that's my primary obligation is to prosecution and I'm on this for trial list for some significant cases coming up in September. That is a good goal in all my time, as well as the budget session. Also a grand jury session coming up in August, um, which requires a significant amount of time. Um, in short, our office is gonna be pretty much in dire straits by August ninth, I don't have somebody on board ready to go. And I can't meet that deadline, waiting till August to present to the commissioners. And then I have to wait two additional weeks and then come in with no one to train. I don't have anybody who can legitimately train and, uh, administrative assistant at that point. Which presents a huge problem. My potential to complete oversight, right, the payroll, I'm not gonna have, uh, no one to dress, do the traditions. No one to meet any of the deadlines we face daily. More so, I don't know, I believe there's some precedent for making these requests. Which may to, and if.
The issue that they just covered, getting out the candidates. Michael, your memo touched on this, it's basically not consistent with our personal policy.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, not what's in the, in the personal policy. And that's why basically he, you know, the opportunity made him aware of that, which he knew anyway. Gave him the opportunity to come and plead his case for, for both of those items that he already mentioned, so. And the question, then it just becomes what action you take and if you do deviate, then I guess just clarification on the rationale for it, so we know precedent-wise that we understand what, what may or may not be set for precedent going forward, I guess. Just so we know how to interpret it later on if this comes up again, I guess.
And that personal policy that is there, I, I mean, I understand a lot of that, it's, it's there. So that you, you give a fair shake to others.
I, I would presume that's intended, and I know, obviously, uh, having been here when we've developed, but also consistency, I would also presume we're trying to get the agreements that the union has and the non-union trying to make those parity, but I was here when it was drafted, so I can't say anyone sent it.
Are you talking about the ten-day notice?
Yeah, that's all, because we haven't moved on.
It would be Friday, even if he had given it to us the day that he gave it to us and we posted it that day, which we did not, and I explained to everybody. We were down two people last week, so I'm doing somebody else's job myself right now. With help from another person that's been here almost two months, so. I have issues as well, but the two days it took us to get it posted, even if you say that that was my error and you go with a, uh, ten-day original posting, the day that he gave it to us, we take it to this Friday. So you'd be essentially that short, technically it would be two more days, which would be over the weekend.
So you gotta carry that, cause.
But you could argue that that was my fault, whatever, so. And I don't know how many applicants he's received, I am only aware of one, so I don't know if it's had any impact on hiring or, or candidates or what, to be honest with you.
So, I guess the question is, has it been posted?
It was posted.
When?
That was last, uh, Thursday.
Okay, so the eighteenth.
And we're seeing one of the resume for in-house, person who's certainly capable will require signature.
So it was posted, it's not been advertised, it's not been.
So we posted it in-house, uh, around on the normal posting places. And on indeed, yeah. And on indeed, which is a posting, posting site for, yeah.
So basically, it's been out there for two days.
Two business days, before as of today, yeah. But I guess, depends on what you count, you're talking twenty-four hours for ladies.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm, yeah.
Well, but ten days, that was just ten.
Says ten days, yeah.
Yeah, it says ten days.
So that's been out there with week and this one, six days, this was the sixth day. If you got Thursday, Thursday, Friday, Sunday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, six, six pieces of six days, so.
My only problem is, you know, I understand the blunder, I really understand the thought, it's just, it looks you know, now that we have a name. It just. I don't know, feels right for somebody making some that the fix was in, but.
There's nothing magical to the days, it's seven, ten days.
Yeah, we had enough. Well, you said there's nothing magical, you're right, but it's the personnel policy.
And if you look at language, like in the contract, there's discretionary things in there, and you know, I think there are times when we have to acknowledge the fact we're trying to produce and live by policy, there's times when, in the interest of getting the best candidates, getting the work done, we have to use that discretion and make exceptions. Whereas the fix being in is Bob is in a position today to select a candidate, step in there, two days. And get everything he needs done for budget preparation, which is huge.
Oh, I understand the.
This is the fix for the dilemma he's in. That I don't care if you waited and let that all look for one day, you're not gonna get somebody in the internal public qualifications, background, experience that this candidate has. And, uh, in the interest of getting the job done and getting the best candidate, I think we should acknowledge the fact that we are setting aside the policy and that there hasn't been a fair notice to follow to the other employees in the public and that, uh, we exempt the ten-day notice.
The primary problem we're gonna face is like, no one to train after the ninth.
You don't have anybody to do the training.
Do the training, right, but Misty's.
Yeah, Misty's leaving, I, I can't do it, you know.
And even if, even if this candidate didn't come in until after the ninth, they wouldn't require any training.
Part of the training, so basically a science step.
And I don't want to diminish your experience, capability, and even you couldn't train this person.
I, I don't have time to do it.
Experience and background.
Um, there's a, a whole bunch of intricate colleagues in the machine, uh, Misty knows very well.
And Misty's, Misty's been in that three years, right?
Okay, so then my second issue that I.
I'll just say, maybe level of experience that, uh, Michelle could have. He can step right into this, that position, without training, for the most part. Also, he knows what the differences are between sheriff's department and the DA's office. Well, first the law enforcement issues, which is our primary focus. And the chief can step in and take care of it, I don't have to decide, just prosecute cases to try and assist with that. She's, everybody, everybody in the county administration, and then with all the county law enforcement personnel who goes in, everyone knows her. Walk in, take charge, I don't have to do anything other than identify three accounts for her and what are devils or dangerous.
So if you consider her experience, if you can.
Or I, I couldn't find a better candidate.
Relevant?
It's entirely relevant, we're, we're a law enforcement agency, so. She knows how the law enforcement operates.
So this, this job lets put all the inside. It's a, it's a is a twelve or an? Okay, this job is. And you're asking so we would normally start at twelve C? Okay, and the request is to start at twelve?
Step J, the question, and the reason. That's the request, and the reason for that is to I'm not going to get this individual without getting in that range.
She doesn't need any training. So, so really, the ten, with this candidate, the ten-day thing goes away.
You know, if I got twenty-five applications over the next four days, I don't make any week for cookie experience.
That's exactly my point.
Okay, the compensations and benefits, says that the initial step please. A former employee who's re-employed, who left county employment good standing after substantial period of, like, his experience is considered significant, relevant to the position. The motion is filling, replaced by a two-step C.
Yeah, that's what, so, so another thing I'm getting at is, now we're set aside too long.
Well, unfortunately, this is not gonna be the question itself. You don't have to go back very far, you have to check the minutes, um, EMA came in. Requested for a system, who was under the same policy. And my memory, uh, said correctly that we approved step J for that person. We didn't, we didn't hold the, the EMA to that policy. But honestly, if you listen to the minutes, if I listen to the bit, uh, audio, there wasn't any discussion. He asked for step J. All that over, for a second or two, motion A seconded, and so this wouldn't be the first time we've set this aside when the, when the situation warranted doing that. I don't know what EMA's candidate applicant for that job possessed that this candidate doesn't. Maybe there was a reason to reconsider whether to set aside a policy, I think, in front of this man. Be the starting date for this effort.
I believe that, uh, he needs three weeks' notice for a current player, paid at the commission.
You have the budget for this?
Coming to a budget session, so I'll, certainly I'll test it for the upcoming.
Well, coming into, but still got five months.
But I, I don't set these, these pay rates to commissioners, too, I don't, I don't.
No, but it, it's paid, this position is paid out of your budget.
But this is not a budget, but I present to the commissioners. It's, it's just.
I guess my question should be, is there money in the checkbook? It's the same question, I, I don't.
What's, excuse me, what's Misty's step right now?
I, I don't know.
Misty, you know.
Yeah, so that, that's that's why I'm asking the question.
I have to do some math to I was, I wasn't aware that this was. Obviously, for the remainder of this year, it would be exceeding budget line for that position for the next five or six months.
Yeah.
And you'd have to reconsider the budget for twenty-twenty-five.
Well, we'd have to reconsider, we'd have to punt it. I don't know, I already know what I'm gonna hear.
Well, it's, it's, it's an additional forty-five.
Well, that's just in, in the, in the red.
Right. You're talking five, you're talking under, under five thousand.
On payroll.
So I'm a little confused over, so she has all the experience, doesn't need training, we need to make sure that approve her in under the ten days, cause she needs training.
Yeah.
It's kind of what I've heard, and she's so experienced, she doesn't need training. But can't wait until, don't break policy.
Well, actually two. I get it, I get it, I'm arguing. It's just if we, the problem is just to clarify, or not, keep broken one, so we can break it twice. Skip us from doing third, fourth, and fifth, and then we might not have the policy.
Well, rather than saying that, maybe what we need to do is amend that policy so we can meet situations. Paul, I don't know how many times I've heard you say how desperate, but how, how much you'd like to have additional salespeople at the store. If you found salesperson.
It's not the same, I understand your point, and I agree with you, but this is not the same thing. This is a governmental entity, and we ask everybody to adhere to policies. And I am, I'm not beating up Mr. Ranger at all, I understand his predicament. My, my predicament is that we have policies that we ask people to adhere to. I have, just had to talk, and it's not one policy, it's two policies. And. Now that I, you know, I wish I didn't know the name. You know, but I can tell you what we're gonna hear, or what I'm gonna hear. Just, it's hard to argue with some of the points that folks are gonna make. But there's, I mean. I'm skirting that, I'm skirting that, the. Being vague here, I have a lot of respect for folks, but what I'm gonna hear is that. Her husband works for you, now she's gonna work for you, and, and. Yeah, I heard it when. These folks were in another department, I'm gonna hear again, and it's. There's no doubt she's a great candidate. And though, you know, I, I just wish, you know, now we're breaking policy to make it happen. I don't know, I, I.
If I could just inject, you know, instead of her obligation to kindly provide the resources I need to run the office.
Right.
As long as I can, I can't run the office. Office manager, new assistant.
Oh, I understand your dilemma.
And it's a matter of timing, Misty's moving away, she's on the schedule, so. I'm stuck with what her situation is.
Yeah, but in this instance, if it's this candidate, you're not, because she doesn't need training. That was your. That was chair.
But what I'm, I'm getting the candidate in line to start as soon as possible after Misty's purse, otherwise I'm not gonna get a position.
It's just, you understand, you understand, I, I, I know I'm gonna get these phone calls, I know.
I'm gonna get the phone calls, and we only have payroll set up, so we'll go to the county office. You know, I'm not gonna be able to do a thing about it.
I'm gonna make a motion that the DA's office be authorized to employ Michelle Colley as DA's assistant for DA's office effective August seventeenth, two thousand, two thousand twenty-four, grade twelve, step J.
I'm not gonna second it, but I understand the dilemma of wrestling with. How to get out of this, but, you know, I. Forty years ago, when I, you know, first ran for this office, you know, I kept hearing, but, you know, what a. Good old voice network, this, you know, the county was, and. You know, I, I always kept that in my mind, that, you know. You can't keep appearing, I'm not saying that's what's happening here, I'm not saying that, but the appearance. In fact, I can, I think I can strongly say that's not what's happening, but. That appearance surely is there.
I have mixed feelings on the whole thing. Yeah. Sure. I know Michelle.
Good. That should be great sense.
We do in the pain of, well, maybe. Yes, oh, I love that, the step H. Consider step H. So.
You what?
So. Where's the, that's a stressful thing, where, where's that twelve? C thing that we're discussing, that you brought up, that's. That's where.
It's in the personal policy.
Okay. It's in the personal policy under compensation benefits.
There's similar language in the contract, except that they have an additional sentence in there that says that.
In the contract, you're saying.
Right, I'm just, I'm just trying to tell you that we do some other departments. Have a provision for step H.
But, but that's in the collective bargaining agreement, not in the personnel policy, which applies here, right? Do I have that right?
Right, if you're going to set aside a policy, at least you're not talking about something that is completely unrealistic.
My problem is we're setting away, we're setting aside two policies, and then all these other elephants in the room. That's the part it's bothered.
Well, I think the policies are a guide, which is discretionary, because this, this mission is already. Probably hard to prove, I don't know, like, if it's, if we're in a situation now, where I haven't got any options coming, what is that?
I, I, I. I get it, I, I just, and. The problem is every time we do it, and we probably should not have done it before, we should have probably had this discussion before, but. Keep doing it, doing it, doing it, pretty soon we have no policy. And that's actually what's happening now, that's the case that's being made.
I, I guess I would prefer commissioners to review that policy, because we're in a situation where you don't need. Every other day, and the reality is that any candidate I get is wanting to be at least two weeks' notice to their employer in most instances.
But that, yeah. Need every two, two weeks, that's basically how government works, that's the problem with this, but. You know, some would argue that there's.
I also view these ranges as. Graduating, going up, based on experience, and this individual comes in with far more experience than anyone I could ever get. That's why I'm not gonna get this individual for a less than. And then we're back to square one, where I don't have. Someone to manage the office. If it's August ninth.
Except for the other avenue.
Yeah, but then I'm gonna take that other applicant, and it's gonna be minimal time now for training this person. Yeah. It's not enough. And we're, our office is swamped as it is, so I'm gonna take that person to hell, or, or him. I've got no one to replace, replace them again, probably for no one. Coming into few trial terms, hey, Brandon.
Oh, I, I. Mr. Ranger, I, I, I really see it, I understand the dilemma, I'm glad I'm not in it, but.
It's a time period, pardon.
I think, I think at the time, if we want to put aside two policies. And we have a pay, we have a pay for it, at least I got, when I get that phone call. I can at least make an argument right now, I, I. I can't, you know, I can, I can say, you know. Everything Mr. Ranger said, I'm not speaking, just. How's it look to the other departments, you know, how, how's it look, you know, I.
Okay, so my motion, last motion, I will add for second, I think the motion that the DA's office be authorized to hire Michelle Colley as DA's assistant, effective eight, August seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, grade twelve, step H.
So, Mr. Ranger said that she won't talk for that.
Well, I'm gonna give him something. Turn away with nothing.
He just said, yeah.
Is the significance of changing it to August seventeenth. Giving her the three weeks, is that the idea, I'm not sure, just give it to the three weeks.
Do we. By rules of order, do we have to set aside a policy, or can we just do it by action?
You have, there's, there's nothing in there that says you have the ability, in the policy, there's nothing that says you have the ability to waive a policy, there's nothing in there.
In my. Creed, where, however, we, you know, anytime that we have to have a policy, we have. You know, we're gonna go outside the policy, we have to have affirmative vote, that we were. Gonna be doing that. We don't have to hear.
It will change. So, are you, somebody's seconded that one?
Mr. Parity, interject that also, I recruited her.
I.
I recruited Misty, because I didn't have other applicants, and I knew her ability.
Thank you for saying that, because that's.
That, this was not.
That's a piece of the puzzle that I didn't have.
I'm, I'm aware of her abilities, I've known her for over twenty-five years. I saw her out, she asked a lot of questions. But she didn't take that, I don't have to meet her, her pay scale, she's not paying.
So.
I've just a predicament coming up, I've got to do something.
That. That. That helps, because. That's not scuttled by, but, scuttled by is not.
If anyone asks you a question, you can point to me, because I, I actually contacted her. In meeting where she'd have any interest.
We have a motion on the floor for, for step H, to call a vote, on the seventeenth.
Well. That is what's on the floor.
It's been named in some of the just. Session. All those in favor? Uh, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
We had, uh, back last year, I tried to, I, one of my lieutenants retired, and wanted to be rehired. Now, we're talking about doing the same thing that was voted against then, and that position was, uh. I lost a lieutenant, which meant I lost a supervisor on call, I lost a supervisor down at the MDA. What I'm asking is that everybody be treated fairly, that's all, that everybody be treated fairly. And I understand Ball's issue, we, we went through a period this year where we were three patrolmen short, we just had to make the best of what we have. And I understand and respect, uh, what he's trying to do over there, but I'm just asking in fairness that everybody be treated the same. I think the only thing to keep in mind, too, is what's a union contract, and what is it? Take the, we hire, rehire on that one, essentially get back into the same position, right, this. So. He, he was gonna assume the same position, and, and, uh, since we couldn't do that, that position, I moved it down to Washington County, and he's, he's still the supervisor down there now, but he's technically employed by Washington County. But as he would have been here, fully reimbursed by the state.
In response to that, I'm not gonna get somebody with purple opinions for listening to this.
And I wasn't with my lieutenant.
That's the problem with this motion, right? Is, is, what you're making, Mr. Ranger?
I'm sorry.
The current. The current motion is step H.
Right, I, I don't know if she'll accept that.
Well, step J is out of the question. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye. And, and I'm gonna, no, not because of, I'm glad of that. Not because of, just trying to adhere to policy, I understand Mr. Ranger's, a lot of blood, so. All right, hopefully solved, because I'm not sure that it's gonna be.
All right, next up, Jim, you all set, Bob?
No, I believe that Michael presented another question.
And while you're here, I guess, the budgetary question that was brought up, that's later on, the agenda, I don't know. So I'm assuming you don't have the time to wanna stay here till the end of the meeting to get to that, but just that Washington County had asked about continuing reimbursement, and they are proposing again the fifty percent rate that they have been. Essentially invoice and paying in the past, and the way that it occurred, as I understand it, is that we. The DA's office cements travel time, both to Washington County for the work, presumably due for them, and both, and then for Hancock County as well. And in the past, up until the provision of the vehicle now for the DA. Hancock County would send Washington County a bill for fifty percent, Hancock County's bill, and Washington County would send Hancock County fifty, and then their bill, and then we both reimburse each other. So you're paying fifty and fifty. They wanted all to continue paying fifty, and the question just is, is obviously we're providing him with the vehicle now at a hundred percent, so we're only, it's not like we're paying your mileage anymore, correct? So, it's just the gas and the maintenance and all of that, and the actual provision of the vehicle. And is that fifty percent arrangement from a budgetary standpoint that both they have to figure out, and we would have to know going forward for twenty twenty-five's proposed, but. Is that, do you want to just continue that agreement, or should be larger discussion about how that should occur again?
Well, my feeling of reading that is, are they proposing paying half of what the expenses are?
They, they are not, now, that's, here's the issue. Up until, I'm not sure when it took effect, March, I billed Washington County, for any time I went to Washington County, Hancock County didn't contribute. And I had proposed. Last year, it was last year, that there'd be some consideration, the treasurers meet and discuss just the fifty fifty split. Between the costs, because I'm running a district.
Yeah.
Not two separate counties. And apparently that took effect, I, I wasn't aware, it actually took effect. And recently, I've made several trips up there strictly to Washington County business. And I just had a little heartburn, the county just provided the vehicle, and the gas, but then have to. But then have to reimburse the, the response, the fifty percent. Of the mileage cost. When I'm going to Washington County.
So it seems to me. Hearing that, and that's sort of how I read it. That they should be paying us mileage.
Correct.
When that happens, but, or paying half the vehicle.
And then next, this coming budget session, I'm gonna be seeking contribution for that. For that vehicle, so I'm going to between both counties.
Yeah.
And it doesn't seem fair that. They only pay fifty percent and not contributing to the, the vehicle cost, you have. I'm not getting any money out of it.
No, you're getting half, but a heartburn.
But it, um, it just didn't seem to sit well, so I'm glad the suggestion came up. And then. Perhaps the commissioners want to discuss it with the Washington County Commissioners.
Well, Michael, you've obviously put some thought into it. For. Well, what, what, I mean, what's fair, I don't know how often this happens. You know, I mean, are they, Mr. Ranger, are they half your case load, I mean. Like if you were to say. I know your district is two. Counties, are you?
Probably between the third and a half. Close to a third.
So.
But six offices instead of one. So I have to hit both.
So if you had. If, if they paid you mileage, that would be easy to figure out, you know the total cost. Would that mileage be about third to a half? Or don't we even know that? You, you understand where I'm going?
What? Yeah. I've been doing recently with the last couple trips, what we're just for Washington County business. Was submit bill for the mileage a hundred percent.
Yes.
To Washington County.
Right.
And that's where this feedback has come from. They don't like that. They only wanna pay fifty percent. They want to hate that county subsidies.
If the sole reason that you're going there is for Washington County work, then that seems reasonable.
Correct.
But especially when it's, we're providing vehicle and maintaining it.
I mean, even before, I, to be honest, I don't. We were all scratching our heads on this originally, but I'm not sure how the fifty fifty deal came into effect anyway, I don't know why we wouldn't just. Pay him for time and mileage for stuff that. He's doing for Hancock and they wouldn't just pay for Washington County. But take all those out, yeah, now we're providing a vehicle on top of it. They've got nothing in that game, and, you know, when there's no. You know, we're not asking them up to this point to maintain it, we're not asking them to pay for gas or anything like that. So why wouldn't they just pay a hundred percent of whatever, if that's what you're gonna use as a threshold?
So, Bo, why don't you just make a motion that we bill. Washington County a hundred percent of the mileage for whatever. Or is doing Washington County business without, without, without vehicle. But Pete leaves here, he's going to Calis for cases, Washington County. It's two hundred miles, we'll bill Washington County two hundred miles an hour of county tax, uh, county rate.
And that's what we're doing now.
We're not doing any penalties.
That's what I've been doing the last two bills I submitted, this is the feedback I got.
And they don't like it.
They don't like it.
He's submitting it directly to our, we, we have nothing.
We have no fault.
And I'm saying that we just reaffirm what's already going.
Right.
Washington County knows that, hopefully they'll just, as we have to.
It's gonna be addressed in the Washington County budget upcoming, so.
One other. Other, there's other districts that span more than Washington County, right? But do they, do you have any idea what they do?
I'm not sure what they do, I mean, they're all, one of them's different.
Yeah.
The districts in state.
So, so your suggestion.
We're getting bills and we're paying half of them, but then we were also getting money from them for.
So.
It's, this is simplified.
This, we just, we simply don't move to reaffirm the process of what we're presently using. Building a hundred percent of mileage for Washington County cases. It stands with the meetings.
There are instances where, remember, Washington County District, white cases, in which case. I think that, that they're reading, I guess.
The difference is though here, um, you're. So you're saying that the county should be billing Washington County and he's submitting his own.
Right, yeah, see, that's why I'm not sure that, that, I'm not sure that it's the. That's exactly what I'm.
It's not necessarily.
My problem, I don't think that's any action required by us at all.
I didn't mean the county.
Right.
What I meant was, oh, to bill Washington County, Washington County cases, that they'll get the Hancock County's mileage.
But then we're telling him.
Well, I think we're gonna have to have, Michael. Draft a letter.
Yeah.
To, with our position.
What I've been doing is.
Get our rationale for a while.
What I'm required to do for Washington County is give them the mileage and reason it went to Washington County, so I have to submit that. And then see, when I was driving my personal vehicle, then they send me a check. For mileage.
And as John just said, all I wanted to do was let Washington County know what our position is. But we will, will tell them what our position is.
The only difference now is they're sending a check. Back to the county.
See, that, that would be the other. Component of that, just make sure that everybody's aware of that, because.
Yeah, we're not sending.
Yeah, that's right. We're gonna deal here, it's ideal for the DA, so. And, and that really, well, no, but I'm not saying, I mean, the reality is, if, if, if we're gonna be. Reimbursed, quote unquote, for something, and the presumption is, is because we're providing the vehicle, it's counting on vehicle, then probably. And I hate to say this, because I know finance is probably gonna throw something at me, but it probably ought to be the county that is sending the bill out, but we would have that. We only could get that information from the DA anyway. So, because we would be the one reimbursed.
Wait a minute, I. We do want that check coming.
We really do, and apparently we are.
My guess is that he, Mr. Ranger's office is probably just getting it.
I, I don't see a check, so I, I understand that it comes, it's written out to the county of Hancock.
Yeah, so we would need copies of what you're sending to Washington County.
So you would, you would bill them for your mileage and they would send us the check, we would keep the check.
Yeah.
Correct, that's.
That is what they've been doing.
Except they're only gonna, except now they would be expected to pay all. Which is why they're asking for this again, to go back to their fifty percent.
Situations where there's gonna be a fifty fifty split is when I go to Augusta to testify for legislature, for prosecutor needs. Be the attorney general. Those are all. District issues.
And you could do that through your billing process.
Yeah.
So that was your, you get to turn fifty miles, it's a joint venture, you had to build them a hundred and twenty-five percent.
What, what?
You said copy the, they wanna cover it.
I can, I can put mine in. On that.
It's the finance department would need a copy of the invoices, so we know, so we can track it, so we know what's been billed.
Well, historically, I never did that when I billed for my personal vehicle. Washington County wanted the mileage and purpose of the trip and the date. That's why I've been giving.
In that case, we really didn't have any stake in it, so.
So. I'm really struggling with language, so.
Say, Greg, Michael, too.
Yeah, so I was gonna move to communicate to Washington County that Hancock County. Will bill. Washington County for a hundred percent of.
Washington County business travel.
Washington County business travel. Here. That do it?
And that's at Hancock County's rate, so you're just gonna use whatever our mileage rate is coming in building, right?
They're different.
I mean, I don't know, but that's the thing, I don't know if they've got a different deal.
They're different by a half cent, I think.
Yeah, so I mean, that would be the other question, just so I'm clear. We just say in our tracks, our rate, or.
We always know.
Six, sixty-seven point five?
Uh, right now, our hours is sixty-seven cents.
Okay, they might be sixty-seven point five.
We always want to know, we always know what's right.
Whatever the higher the two rates.
Move to communicate to Washington County that Hancock County will bill Washington County a hundred percent of the mileage for district attorneys, Washington County business travel, using the Hancock County mileage rate.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 You want it. Just a thought. If it's district business, then we'll raise both counts.
We're gonna, we're gonna. You know what, you know what we need to do, you know what's fair, we don't need to. We don't need to dictate policy.
I'll draft something real quick, send it to you, and if you like it, let me know.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, because. In that instance, one way is Washington County, the other one. Is Hancock County. Right, let's say you had to go to Augusta. From here.
That's prosecution, the district as opposed to county. That's district, so, that's both counts.
So, the other part of that, just real quick, follow some home resources, so we pay you fifty dollars a month, we can.
Right, and I don't think that that's where the Washington County's.
Well, yes. So they offer to pay twenty-five dollars, but, but what I, both Monica and I talked about, it doesn't make sense that. We pay him fifty bucks and then turn around and have to bill. Washington County twenty-five dollars and then have a reimbursement that we have to keep track of as well, I mean. Why can't we just say, you pay twenty-five, we pay twenty-five, you don't wanna bill them twenty-five?
I, I don't bill these, yeah.
So, that's a stipend you get from the county.
Yes, yes, it has, just.
So they should be doing the same thing.
Correct.
But so really the question is, if it's splitting it fifty percent, can't we just. Can each entity be paying fifty percent of it and not have to, we pay him a hundred percent and then they have to pay us back?
Yeah, he should be paid a stipend from Washington County and a stipend from.
Okay.
Perhaps you can write a letter and be. Suggest that.
I'll add it in phase two of that.
We'd be fair, one kind of thing.
Okay. And, and is that like. Legislature, because when they did the districts, right, they. This came, there used to be a district attorney in every county one time, right? Then they did.
County attorneys, you're beginning.
Yeah, that, okay, that's what I mean. And then they came up with this district thing. And no way to share the pot, there's no legislation around it?
You don't, you don't wanna get me going on.
Sounds like a mess.
So. And then when you've got two different administrative staffs that have, one operates on a, a union contract and one operates on a non-union contract. To more of this, because I can't take. Employee here to fill in Chinese or Calis, because they're non-union. They're teamsters in Washington County, they have to get permission from. Commissioners here that they can employ a Hancock County for work. Commission from Washington County Commissioners to bring one in, and permission from teamsters to bring non-union employee into a union job. So if you want some headaches. That's, that's the problem, in a situation where someone goes out on twelve weeks of disability, family. In Washington County, I've got no filling.
Really, thank you.
Hi, thank you.
I'm trying, I'm trying to get back into my computer. So, I can't get in it.
Will we get to see that? Which one is it we, we took to God? Is it A or B?
Okay, so. We're A.
We're just gonna see.
Okay, do you have anything to add, or?
I'll just, I'll just explain C was not what I wanted.
All right, no, no, I just didn't know if you want. How about I just. Move to approve hiring Colton Tibbetts of Elzorance as part-time as needed corrections officer effective July twenty-seventh, pay rate nine A with no benefits as requested.
Second motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to approve hiring Pepper. Timmerman, Mahaber, part-time as needed corrections officer effective July twenty-seventh, pay rate nine A with no benefits as requested.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
See.
Discussion.
I would like to. Make this a discussion earlier today, corporation, um. That you'd like to be full-time with full benefits, same day, same pay rate, everything, it's like change. As a full-time corrections officer. With full benefits. We have a basis.
Precession.
Okay, so. But pay rate's same, everything.
Everything's the same.
Okay, so move to approve. Trevor Luna of Ludsworth. As. As full-time corrections officer. Effective July twenty-seventh. At pay rate nine A with full benefits as requested.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're skipping over. We're, we're at E now. Move to approve hiring Brooks Lynn as part-time as needed corrections officer effective July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, at pay rate nine A with no benefits as requested.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Move to approve hiring Dorothy Fletcher Holden as part-time as needed cook, effective July twenty-seventh, at pay rate six B with no benefits as requested.
B is because she has, she's from, she moved here from Arizona, she has prior line cook experience with the Gold Canyon Resort and Spa in Gold Canyon, Arizona. Just to get experience there.
Do we have a policy that allows a B for that?
It makes a distinction between either. All right, I said, I don't believe it makes a distinction between part-time or. What you read before is what it is.
Up to. To B.
Yeah, that's what I guess, it's what I understood. It's the B's.
Okay, you made the motion?
Yeah.
Second. In favor?
Aye.
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 Yes, good morning, I'd like to request to approve the. Jonathan Keenan Osro. Part-time custodian. Payable rate six A effective July twenty-sixth.
So move this request.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, next, I'd like to.
Excuse me, okay. We. At the. Timmerman. We're gonna have a couple requests this morning for. Alterations in the court, I was. Couple different departments. And. Suspect both of them are locked, they're worked down from our funds. But. I think. I really think that we should put an emphasis and do some pre-planning. In the immediate future. With. An idea towards what we're going to do. Three years down the road, four years down the road, when the court moves out of here. I'm concerned that we're going to start piecemealing and it'd be rather dysfunctional. Just junk in doing little here, little there, that we're gonna end up three years down the road tearing out because we have a different plan. At that point of, of the global scheme. You know, one of the. Projects this morning is an alteration in the sheriff's office training room to accommodate detectives. But there's always been in the back of my mind the idea that when the court moved out, we would move the DA's office up to this floor. Renovate this space. Renovate this space for the district, for the sheriff. And then repurpose his area downstairs. Uh, Tim Richardson. Think he brought this to us, maybe it's just me, nice call, but Tim has had an offer by the federal government to pay for renovations to the jail if it would give defense the opportunity to board people in the jail. And Tim's idea, which I think is excellent, is when the court leaves, is to continue the jail right down through to include the district court and the hobbies for the district court. Expand the jail into this space. And make cells there that the federal government would then pay for. And so.
So, so jail's above.
You have to, you have to deal with the elevation situation, nevertheless, it's, it's, it's not, you know, it's not. It can be done. You can make that work. My point is, is that when the court leaves, there are some, there are a number of issues that we haven't taken the time to sit down and try to figure out what we're going to do today so that we don't waste money today on something that we would tear out three or four years down the road. And I would like to suggest that we put a hold on any renovations right now to the courthouse. And sometime real soon, we have.
When you said courthouse, it's built.
This building, right. At sometime real soon, we have a work meeting, a work session. And we sit down and kind of put some general thoughts together on what we think we want to do with this building to include the DA's office. Now, I will tell you that just anecdotally, the court system met with a landlord last week and looked at a piece of property. So the Suri Road may be their best choice, but it's not their last choice. And the piece of property they looked at, if that became doable, there is a piece of property next to it that the same landlord, uh, the landlord owns that he would make available to the county for a district attorney's office if we wanted. So we're back to considering again, trying to build the DA's office, getting him out of that money pit across the yard. And attack, you know, and contiguous with the new court building. So, I mean, there is a whole bunch of global issues here going on that before we start spending twenty thousand here, thirty thousand there, and then tearing it all, all out, three, four years down the road, that we at least try to do some general ideas on what we think this building's gonna look like three, four years down the road after court.
So, but I agree with that premise. One of the promise, one of the problems is, this is ARPA funds and ARPA funds won't be available to do that.
And. We're not talking about, we're not talking about situations where it was a catastrophic failure, for example, needs to be addressed. These are, these are problems that nagging departments for years. And perhaps that we, we just set aside and we, we say, it's gonna have to be nagged a little longer until we figure out what we're going to do on the landscape. And these people are not going to be severely disadvantaged by not getting these projects today. Nothing says that after this meeting that we have, this work session, that these projects can't come back to us knowing now that it's not going to be torn out two or three years down the road.
So, this, okay, let's say we did that work session. Uh, we know enough that work session, because, I mean, because that work session sort of, you'd be making some assumptions, A, that, you know, there's a few assumptions that have to be made for the well, we can have that information is my question.
I don't know, but I, I can tell you that we're fortunate to have Dennis in this position because if we say to Dennis, Dennis, can you do an evaluation of the space needs of the sheriff's department and compare that to the court offices that would be left vacant when they move out? Now, now that is something I, I feel that Dennis is qualified and capable of doing for us. So that at the work session, he can lay out a plan saying, I've talked to the sheriff, I understand his needs, I've looked at the space. And based upon that, this is a concept drawing of just a rough concept drawing, how we can accommodate the sheriff in the existing courthouse space. And so anyways, it tells us it's doable, you know, we're not making commitments. But at least we're not, it's not pie in the sky. It's, it's, we, we know that it's something that, that at least it's, it's passed the first review. And if we don't, if we don't buy land next to the courthouse and if the DA's office doesn't move, it doesn't mean that we shouldn't try to think about getting out of that building, the money pit it's causing us to work on. And so we'd ask Dennis to do the same thing. If the sheriff's department moved from that space, is the, can the existing sheriff's department space be repurposed for the DA's office? Is there space, is the square footage space down there to convey if we move the RCC and the sheriff up, up on this level? To see, don't you see that there is a lot of global work that we should be doing before we start, before we continue spending money for these small renovation projects that make it torn out three, four years down the road?
Dennis, your, uh, long-range projects, you know, you set aside money for. How are you doing on the budget? I just like, is everything like, I guess I'm wondering, sure, maybe like, like, these things would never happen if we didn't have ARPA, but maybe.
Yeah.
Maybe you can ask for something to happen. You reserve funds for, or there is.
Well, we have our reserve funds, which likely we've been able to reserve for the last couple of years, and that's at seven hundred thousand? Um, to guess, I guess, I didn't want to say without going around that. About we still have in our G account. And the number of projects, the jail and these steps that we've been able to do through our big benefit, and they've all been on budget so far. And my sense is that you're suggesting maybe table this, these issues until there's been a, a meeting or a strategy to at least determine what space is eligible for renovation and what is going to be, would it be a waste of time? I agree, I hate to put thirty grand into something and then tear it out because we're.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with, uh, Sheriff Clark. I, I have kind of had some issues with it overall, to be honest. And it's probably more that, in my opinion, it's a spirit of how the ARPA funds are supposed to be used. But there's all kinds of opinions on that.
Sure.
Uh, uh, so, I'm not saying I'm totally opposed to the plans, but it's it's not exactly how it's supposed to, how it's supposed to be worked.
John, this is a good example, because if we were to take advantage of the Fed's offer, if Tim's suggestion and plan came to fruition, we don't need new office space. And I'd like to see us, these three commissioners at meeting, get that down to the county government people in other words. And that's another thing I'd like to see Dennis do, is take that floor from Michael's office up front, clear back the deeds and repurpose that. Putting the commissioners meeting room in the existing registry of deeds portion, the big office in there. And making space and prefacing space for the commissioners meeting room, our administrative assistant, Brittany, and then the treasurer, assistant treasurer, HR. And put the registry deeds up front across from Prop eight so that when we get all done, we're all on, government services are all on one floor. So if, if that had any merit, that suggestion, building this office in registry of deeds space today would be torn out three years down the road. Because we would be repurposing that for meeting space and I think a new office for Michael. So that's, I mean, that's, that's a good example why we should be putting these projects all in whole. And doing this, having this work session.
The other thing though is, I think, I think, you know, there's lots of good ideas, I'm not saying those aren't good ideas, I'm just saying, when it really comes down to it, you need to have architects look at the ideas that you're trying to do and how practical they are. And, you know, I think about like the last three years or whatever, us doing stuff for, uh, the RCC, like, we spent all that money, all on new wire, all of them like, oh, now we're just gonna move them up to another part of the, like, oh my God, you know, like, to the amount of money it would cost to do that, I'm a little bit like, you spent, you know, whatever, I don't even remember how much money you spent on the RCC renovation, but you're kind of. So, I mean.
Was that five hundred thousand?
So, I, a little bit like, yeah, maybe that sounds good, but it is not a practical solution, but you have an architect sit here and go, oh, yeah, well, we need to do this, this and this. You know, we've had sticker shots before, we've had ideas and all of a sudden, okay, well, now reality's back. And how are we gonna pay for it? So, some things I think we're gonna have to like play by ear until we get a lot farther down the road.
Well, these two together.
It's really a capital plan is what you're.
Yeah.
And that's what needs, I, I haven't been involved in any discussions on capital planning since I got here. And it, it never, I've never sat down with Dennis or the county administrator to discuss any of that, so it does seem like a, an appropriate time if we have, you know, upcoming changes in space to, to do a better job of almost a comprehensive plan for, for the future of the space.
One of the one of the problems with that is we could do all kinds of comprehensive planning, and then it doesn't come to fruition, because
It's years away.
It's years away and, and, you know, the state and federal government, boy.
Yeah, we're not gonna spend any money. We're gonna spend money if we don't plan. That's the problem, we're spending, you know. Again, we're not gonna spend any money to sit down and put some tentative laws together and say, okay, this is that concept. I don't give it to architects, spend tens of thousands of dollars to decide it. We're simply going to say, if, can this, can, can, is there enough space in the existing sheriff's department? Square footage wise to meet the needs of the DA's office, for example, without the concept? That doesn't, that doesn't cost us anything. It's, it's like what Mark was saying, at some point, we need to sit down and put our capital plan together here because we know one thing is certain, the courts are leaving. I don't know where they're going, they don't know where they're going, but they're gonna be leaving. And they're gonna be leaving us with a lot of space that we're gonna have to figure out how to use. And today is not too soon to start deciding how we're gonna use this place.
Well. Yes, the only word for going is that we're gonna use ARPA funds.
And we know that's not the case, we know we can't, we, we lamented that before, that by the time we want that money, it's been great, the court didn't let us fall. And I mean, but we still haven't.
We're actually years before that.
Yeah, right. But that's not, we know that's not the case, it's always been not the case, but that doesn't mean that we waste our ARPA funds today, tear out everything we do today, when that, when that comes along. I still think that between the capital reserve accounts and CBA and whatnot, we will have certain amount of cash to, to do some of these renovations when it comes down.
It's not like we're not using other ARPA funds to keep projects off the regular.
Oh, yeah. The, these. Plumbing job and the stairs job alone, saving kind of five hundred thousand, yeah. Very grateful for that.
So, it's, it's really, it's really still.
We're creating hardship, but I mean, you were gonna get these going like right away.
Yeah. Only because in this, these cases, we have the image where the county would act as a general contractor and just hire our established vendors to do pretty, two pretty simple projects.
But we wouldn't do these projects if we didn't have ARPA.
No.
We wouldn't do these, this, this is whittling away at balance of the funds. And there's three and a half million left in there, sounds like a lot of money, but we're gonna need a million and a half, give or take, if we do the ELC thing that we're talking about, we're gonna need another two million if we do the DA's office. I think we should be thinking about putting a freeze on the balance of the ARPA funds until we know those two major projects that we're not gonna need.
We only had full Jan, so.
And we'll know by December, we're not gonna need that money.
All right, so we've seems to me like by consensus, we've decided that we're tabling these two. And we need to establish a timeframe to, to a meeting to.
What? I think especially to accommodate all of them. I think if we could do this on the second meeting of the month after the regular meeting, Michael, if we can make that.
Oh, in August, the second one in August?
August or September, you know, something like that, whatever, but to. So, just, just, just because we may have more of these requests coming to us, we should get this workshop done first so that we know to stall off all these other requests that may become.
So, this, these two, Dennis, uh, the deeds one, the twenty-five-three one?
Yeah.
That was talked about during our ARPA.
It was.
And, and where is that on yet?
I believe it was two, two projects in deeds, and one might be.
So there was the UT one originally that was asked for.
That's right.
And then the other one, because that was recommendation at the time of the department. But it should, I think it appeared, I think we ultimately put those under maintenance, didn't we?
Oh, when I see that, that the deeds project is, is the office in deeds for UT is labeled as that twenty-nine-four. It's almost the second item down right under the jail plumbing, under maintenance.
And at the time, they wanted the office for UT?
Well, I mean, that was part of the discussion that, that I think Dennis was.
I'm looking at this.
Oh, 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 no, because that hasn't been. It hasn't been approved yet, so it's not on.
It's not on this?
No.
No, that would have been the other one that gave you this one, that we had done a breakdown of what was asked for in the workshop versus what you've already decided.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah. Okay, so.
You see, the office for the UT is another good example because the UT is leaving in the new ELC building. To get that finished, so that's the case there, but.
It's my thing how that came to, just so you know how it came to, is that the, uh, essentially for Julie had suggested that because people come in all the time and ask for the maps, well, how are you gonna put the maps over at a location where it's not staffed full-time because quite frankly, Miller's rarely here. So that's how that initially started the conversation, so there was some reason why she strongly felt that you couldn't separate Miller from the deeds component. You know, you'd have to have that conversation with her in greater depth to, to understand, but that's how that came about anyway, as a suggestion, so. And that could be true, I mean, I, I don't have enough, I don't obviously sit in their office to know whether or not, or how much traffic she gets or requests or something, it's in Miller's office.
What's the maps?
Yeah, you can see, where are they or what? So really just the layout maps, other maps with roads and other stuff that they have, if I understand.
Property map, I believe unorganized territories. They're on hangers, big hangers.
Okay, so, so that's that one, the twenty-two-five one. The, the detectives, that was not on.
No, that's a recent one. Sheriff had a, a glut of evidence come in and they had a, a storage problem or and we're trying to get creative about a way to solve that.
So. So, so, so that problem has not gone, going away?
No.
Do we have a way to deal with that till this time, till the meeting hit the phone?
Well, status quo, I guess, I guess.
We'll take care of it.
Well, I don't know, but that's why I'm asking the question.
We did, we met with Dennis and Dave, the two detectives, the lieutenants and myself and chief, we met. And we approached Dennis because we are busting into the seams with our evidence. Yes, we did have a glut. We just had thirty-two guns we had to seize by a court order. They have to be kept in a certain place. And we were up against space, but we thought if we could use where the detective's office are and move them into a temporary space down there, that's, that's what our thought process are. But, you know, there's more and more evidence all the time. It doesn't take many of those cases where you bring in that much evidence that you're gonna lose now. Does that happen every day? No, it doesn't happen every day. But we also need to look down the road where some things should not be in the building. You know, you may get an evidence of, of a motorcycle or something, so we need to look around somewhere where we can put that type of stuff. But the conversation that we originally had with Dennis and Dave was because we just need some more. And, you know, it's not that, strangely, all know there's not a heck of a lot of spare room around. Right, but I mean, if, if our EOC plans right now come to fruition and we're gonna have Buku storage space. And that can, that's gonna be, that can be a security space. For example, we don't need to put the seized automobile from MDA in the evidence room. But you do need to keep that. And so, and if we renovate the existing meeting downstairs today, and that becomes the ace office space, three years down the road, that's over. I mean, that's just a case of, it's just another example of what, just put everything off until we know what to do.
Yeah.
And, and that's all, I don't have a problem with that. I'm just saying, I'm just trying to clarify why we made the request, what it was for. And if we're gonna sit down and look at the whole global picture, I'm all aboard, let's do it.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, next.
Well, actually, I can have square footage and space information available for you. To contrast, compare it.
Well, if you don't mind my intrusion, I'd love to sit down with you. And I think, I think too, if, it's just like, if we wanna do that, and if the sheriff is serious, is, is approved, agrees with moving up here, he thinks that's a good idea, then give him layout up here and say, okay, what would you do with this space if you had? Let him decide. And so, you know.
Right.
And I know what you're saying, Jim, but I, I think that moving the SCC with the Sheriff's Department is a good idea because they still can act as receptionists for them. And they still have space issues down there, even after all we did. We, we just took what was available and put it in there, so. Anyways, we have an opportunity to improve that situation and keep RCC and Sheriff's Office together. But if the sheriff agreed with that, give him, you know, what do you call it, stratic or something like that?
A floor plan.
Floor plan, yeah. Give him the floor plan for this floor and say, okay, what would you do with it? And see what he suggested this meeting.
That's what I do. Uh, yeah, well, connecting our, our site visits for the paving job. Generally, paving is an offer on Jersey Berry, down there, that we had around the old jail, which I stacked up to the side right now. Twenty-two-hundred, is that price too good?
Yes, absolutely.
How many?
Twenty-one is the total.
Would be paid.
Nine thousand dollars.
Again, I don't have.
Can you put your name on the warrant, says Peter? Two thousand dollars.
Well, we do, our preventive plan was to move about, watch injunctions at every.
Well, and, and it sounds like they may be of use there.
I'm like.
I don't know, but I think that the difference to, if we're gonna sell.
You made the offer and I told him I would.
They, they have some printed value.
Well, we don't know what it is and if we're gonna use them. I, I hate that.
It's gonna be too hasty, right?
And if this, again, comes to fruition up there, if we want to hang on, we have the space to do that. I think we should. Yeah, I'll talk for that. Yeah.
Good. And then we have a bit over.
All right.
We have three site visits from, we just, New England's paving and Eaton paving. And a second package up to. A total of seven, seven.
Yeah, Eaton paving right here. And we're paving DA's apartment.
Yes, the jail approach apron, DA's lot, the courthouse general parking lot, and this includes that new work along underneath the parking garage with the curb.
But we're not, we're paving under the.
Under the garage.
How far you going up with the jail? So like into the wood garden or something like that, or even that power?
Yeah, all the way up to the chiller.
Okay.
Could be the whole thing.
Yeah, and all three said that they could manage.
Now, the question is about how much grinding to do, and so everybody agreed and so giving apples to apples.
Yeah, I amended that to each respondent to read grinding or milling as needed. Because the consensus among all of them that looked at it was that even though the industry standard on roadways and, and for top shelf work, like a place like this, an overlay would be not just a robbery, but sometimes beneficial, and they all agree that that was the case.
Is the contractor keeping the grindings? Are you keeping the grinding speed up?
I assume we are not, my proposal, we're not taking a significant amount out, just a couple of removal areas, which should probably just be peeled out to expose the existing subbase material.
You'd get rid of that.
Yeah, you know, you're talking about maybe twenty-five or thirty tons of.
Don't expect the reclaim side to be any significant.
Whatever they take, whatever they grind, you know, it'll take.
And the grade that whether jail will elevate that. The grade, right now, just down in, I believe, is what it dropped there, that grade, I assume that grade is it.
The, yeah, the objective will be to flatten out, level everything this.
Where's the, where's the?
There's a grate, we walk out the door, there's a grate in the.
And that's one of the issues we talked about, where around the grates and such, to maintain the height, it would do a lot of the milling. Or where some places on the stick, they just remove it. But up there, to match the contour, you've also got that handicap area that we need to maintain.
So from Eaton, that's, uh, one hundred and six thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. One hundred and six thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. I do have a breakdown of each part, but.
Eaton, did you say you were gonna get all of paving done this year?
No, Dennis and I spoke about that at some length, is that the renovations around the old, the old building down there. Probably have to be next year anyway, on that portion of it.
You can do old jail understand that, has little holes wrapped in them?
They are, they're gonna be done, uh, they're saying this week, possibly Friday. It might be Monday or Tuesday, and after that, they gotta go right over to our project. And while they get the crew up here.
Dylan, while we're talking about that, too, I would like to, I would like to, let me suggest to Michael, he can contact whoever and make sure they're gonna take those poles out that have fencing on it. Those poles are out there now that we don't need that fence, that fence. So, Michael.
This one is for Dumbies Construction, do this. That amount is one hundred and fifty-two thousand forty dollars.
One back to overall?
One hundred and fifty-two thousand forty dollars. Okay, that's right, so that one is base bid option.
What's that mean?
Just to find out. The second one is alternate bid option. Which is two hundred and six thousand two hundred and fifty.
You're gonna have to wait for this.
What was the other, uh, second one? The alternate is listed at two hundred and six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Last one is from Northeast Paving. Their bid is one hundred and sixty-one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
All you need is those old things.
I need a few minutes, please, I need, I want to take a closer look at that base arm and the arm.
Well, it, it seems to me that there was, there's also some questions about what work needs to be done compared to what we spent, in other words, the grinding, need grinding here, don't need grinding there, need total reconstruction here. So one of my questions is, are we really comparing apples to apples with all these?
Yeah, every, every respondent was given the same information.
And you met with every?
Everyone.
No, but, but, they're, they're not questioning that, I'm, I'm not questioning.
The issue of milling was clear to everybody, that was not to be a blanket approach, okay? Uh, I sent an email to each saying that instead of, uh, milling required, should be milling as needed for each.
What I'm wondering, I guess I should try to figure out how to ask my question. It sounds like each one of these may have had some suggestions that may differ from each other, and one might make more sense than.
For sure.
One approach might make more sense, and then, but the other, they fit it that way.
But I shared the information with each respondent.
And I think, I think the key is here, is Dennis understands what the minimum requirement is. Now, if, if, if one of these estimated the minimum requirement, if somebody estimated requirements that exceeded the minimum, well, and the cost, what's seen on them? If, if the lowest bidder here, Dennis says yes, the information I received, they, they met the minimum, estimate the minimum requirement, then, and you've got another one up there that did more than the minimum requirement, I don't think that's, that's a reason to challenge the bid. It's just.
No, no, I'm not challenging the bid.
Well, I'm saying, I think the question is, is Dennis is gonna do that, did these, did first of all, Eaton paving the lowest bidder meet the minimum requirements?
Yes.
Now, if somebody came up with a requirement that exceeds.
Or they have a method or some.
And you said, you know, we thought of this, we need to do this, and you once suggested we take that because that's the requirement, that's the discussion we're gonna have. But I think the long line is, is that, did the lowest bidder meet the minimum requirements that you set? You believe that that's in that bid.
And one of my goals would be to discern is, is are these, are these offers based on that same set of requirements?
So Peter, what's gonna happen is that we're gonna give these, we're gonna give these bids to Dennis, he's gonna take them down, review them. We have other business to take care of, we're still gonna be here for another hour or so. One of them is an executive session, there's no public, no, no media, so if you wanted to wait for the results of that, you're welcome to.
Actually, I've got to run over to Stu Van de La Fima Media, that's.
I'll give Dennis his cell phone number, yeah, he will, he'll let you know, okay?
Not a problem at all, I've heard each time.
Dennis, my, my question was, the reason I was asking that is, you know, one of these is two of them are close.
Right, yeah, it's way lower, yeah.
Way lower. And, you know, or these others you suggested something that.
Right, is there something, and that's my goal to find that out. All right. And I'll come back up later in the meeting.
All right, you ready for anything? Dennis?
Yeah, appreciate it.
All right. So we're just gonna take action on these. Did we agree to do something with this meeting with Coastal Connections?
No, because Anthony was here, he couldn't answer any of the questions, so.
Everything was taken.
And maybe a little summary.
That would be great, yeah.
And as you know, we did the ARPA funds and the phone system, that's installed, all the handsets are in the building already and over the DA building. The next step is to actually install what they call the set lines, we're moving analog to IP. That requires set lines, and that's one of the reasons why the contract, funds consolidated requires a new contract, guys will change all the lines over.
It's just like, I do either.
The set lines is the lines that Consolidated provides to us, we connect to them, and they go up onto our phone system, so.
Zip line?
There was IP connections, and it's just different technologies, so it's, it's cheaper, so saves us money. So we're required to do, do contracts. We went through Sierra for the phone system, Sierra is in business and has a working relationship with the company called Coastal. Coastal is an agent of Consolidated, so they sell Consolidated and they get a commission for some of them. So what happened is we got information from Consolidated for their contracts and from Coastal. I actually called Consolidated directly, or we have a rep from Consolidated, asked him about getting a quote from them directly, and he refused. He said that if we're working with an agent, the costs won't be different, and he will not interfere with an agent because that's not good business to say, for example. Represent Consolidated, so that's why you don't see something just from Consolidated. And that's where we have a contract for Coastal and Consolidated. And I didn't feel right reviewing them, I reported on Michael, had him look at it, because I thought that showed you guys, and you should review for a signature.
Okay, so there's like three different suggested notions here.
Well, there's three separate.
Well, there's three separate agreements, that's all.
Yeah, so, and they're with different parties.
Well, two of them is Consolidated as the different parts of our IP system.
Okay, but I, I'm doing the same, okay?
Yes, right.
Okay. So I think we're now ready for I'm gonna move to approve the business service, services agreement with Consolidated Communication, as presented and authorized a chairperson to sign on behalf of Hancock County.
Okay with that? Motion? Second motion. So, you have a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the next one, I'm gonna move to approve the business services agreement with Consolidated Communication, for business access lines for a term of thirty-six months, as presented, and authorize the chairperson to sign on behalf of Hancock County.
Second. Second motion.
So, this is, first one was just a general agreement.
The two with Consolidated are our monthly contract, well, we're monthly billed and want to pay every month, is what our charges will be per month. And the last one with Coastal is that it'll allow them to be our agent, our representative, to work with Consolidated.
Yeah, so, my question was, why are they, these are two separate documents that comprise our monthly bill, right?
That's right.
Okay.
I think a lot of it may be one-time charges.
Well, our, our bill.
That's right, yeah.
Right, any other discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're gonna move to approve the Coastal Connections Corporation Terms of Term Agreement, as presented, and authorize the chairperson to sign on behalf of Hancock County.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Yeah, just, yeah, go ahead.
I'm gonna move to accept the resignation of Marian Saxall, Human Resource Manager, effective July twelfth, and thank her for her services to Hancock County, and wish her the very best.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Have you already been advertising?
Yeah, yeah, we've done interviews, we've had a second interview, I hope to be perhaps negotiating an offer this week, and our goal would be to maybe come back with a name at the next game, in a perfect world, we would have been able to do it today, but we were not. Unless you want me to change the date line, I can just hire first.
We're looking. We're looking. Alright, Scott, how long's your presentation maybe?
Thirty minutes plus questions.
Okay, can we take a break?
Yeah.
We're gonna spread, we'll spread that. You have one?
Yes, you have one, I'd be surprised.
Should, should have it in here.
Yeah, no, but I, not in, I, once I saw a place like this.
What, what section did you say this is really, interesting, so?
Yeah, this would have been, maybe terrible.
Morning. So, um, I'm gonna take about a half an hour to talk about what we know today about, um, main, main, paid family medical leave regulations that are, um, being finalized and implemented, and tell you what we know now. When we meet with our customers like the county about this topic, we call it a workshop, um, rather than sort of a presentation or a proposal, only to reflect the fact that we don't know everything now. Everything is in draft form, we've got that all over these slides as well. But, you know enough to start planning and paying attention, and so we think there's value in having a workshop, a conversation, even though there is lots of moving pieces. So, uh, in July of last year, the governor signed a budget that included a regulation to implement a new, uh, paid family and medical leave program. This program, beginning in two thousand twenty-six, will pay a benefit to workers to have time off for family or medical leave. The law will apply to all employers and all workers in Maine, um, with the exception of federal employees. The cost of the program initially is going to be one percent of wages. That's the maximum contribution per employee. Uh, we have a timeline on the bottom of slide number two. Program was established last October, draft regulations were issued in May, a few months ago, um, and that opened an opportunity for public comment by employers, by employees, by anybody else, that comment period closed a couple of weeks ago. The authority, um, under the DOL, along with the DOL, has a hundred and twenty days to, um, absorb, consider the comments, and issue, um, uh, updated regulations, so that puts us at August, September, October. By January first of this year, rules must be adopted, and contrib, and contributions from all employers will be required paid into the public fund on January first, so that's a planning problem for anybody that manages a budget, including the county. And, uh, because we don't, we won't have final rules until, let's say, November first, and you're gonna have to start paying on January first, not a lot of time to react or implement change there. The law allows an employer to choose to, uh, have coverage through the public option, run by the authority in the Department of Labor, for a private plan, administered and funded, insured by a carrier, Union Sun Life, the Hartford, Lincoln Financial. Draft regulations say, well, the law says that if you're covered by a private employer, you don't have to pay into this public option. Um, is my understanding, the, but, the draft regulations said that the authority will not be approving, will not be accepting applications for private options until January first of twenty twenty-six. And they will not be approving any private options until April first of twenty twenty-six. So according to those draft regulations, even if you're going to be covered by a private plan, when this plan takes, when the coverage takes effect, you will still have, employers will still have to fund the public option for twenty twenty-five and the first few months of twenty twenty-six, that's the draft regulations.
Excuse me, we sent funding for twenty-five, there's no expenditure, you can't there's no expenditure for twenty-five, I thought that you could send or any benefits.
Withholding. Yeah, the benefit doesn't take effect, nobody's holding for a benefit until May of twenty twenty-six.
But we would still be withholding in twenty-five, is that what you mean?
Yes.
No, we're not withholding, it's not withholding, it's paying.
Well.
We don't pay in twenty-five.
We do.
You do.
Well, I thought since that, or January twenty-six.
You know, I know, um,
Withhold and pay.
At, uh, you, you, you'll have to pay, you'll have to say paying premium in January of twenty twenty-five. That premium can be shared, cost shared with employees fifty-fifty if you wanted to, so you could have employee withholdings in there. But, uh, so you'll have to, in, all employers, according to the draft regulations, will have to start paying into the public option on January first of this year. There will be no benefit paid for until May of twenty twenty-six, so it's funding that public option that's going to happen for, for five, plus seventeen months, or something like that. And that's what's in the draft regulations today. Certainly in the public comment, many employers express concern about, um, paying into a public option when they know they are, um, are going to be having a private plan. Um, there's lots of comments from employers and employer organizations about the unfairness of that, in some fact, some employers provide overlapping benefits today to their employees, so they would be double paying, essentially, um, for those fifteen, uh, seventeen months. So lots of that was in the public comments, there's lots of, um, questions about what the right final regulations will be. The reality is, is that we have to wait until we have final regs, and then we have to react very quickly, because on January first, there's a potential that we have to pay into this public option, even if we're not going to use that public option when the benefit is actually payable.
I don't wanna pre-introduce your presentation, but if you pay into the public option, does the way applied to the public to get the benefit? They pay directly to them?
Correct, so there will be a public, a, a public pool, maybe like unemployment today, where, uh, employers fund that, and then benefit is, you know, people become eligible for benefit, and they get that benefit from the state authority. There will also be private options, like Union Sun Life and the Hartford Financial, where if you're covered by that benefit, you would submit a claim to them, and then they would pay you, um, your benefit. There'll be two options for employers.
So either way, we never pay the benefit directly, or the either plan, correct?
No, they, we be rare. Possible, I guess, for an employer to have a self-funded private option that they self-administer, but large employers, if they have a self-funded short-term disability program, for example, they have it, you would remember something like that administered for, so very likely, you would have a care.
I wish you just listened to your presentation, but if you pay in less to the public than the, than the way we drew for the benefit, do they bill you the additional? You pay in one percent.
The benefit is set by regulation, by, 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 by the law and regulations, the benefit amount is set.
Well, you put math, it looks to me like they can draw it down, what, and you paid it.
Potentially, like any other program, including your health insurance program, or your homeowner's insurance, you pay premium, and then in any year that you're, need a benefit, you're gonna get a benefit much higher than the premium.
So if we use the public and we pay the public, and ended up, an individual got more benefit in there than we paid into it, they, they take care of the difference we didn't pay?
There could be employers that are poorer risk for this, um, in the public option, and then there, and there could be employers that are better risk in the public option, and that will be, uh, be pooled underwriting at some point in the future, the one percent rate, one percent of payroll is set for the first, I think, two years, and then at some point it'll become underwritten, and the actual claims experience will drive the rate, and it could be that, uh, because you're in that community pool, that you're a better risk in your funding, you know, you, you could have a better deal as, as an individual employer, it could be the opposite, you're a poorer risk, and you're getting more benefit than you're paying in. Every employer will be different, and certainly some employers who look, who think, look at this and say, well, we're a better risk, and one of the things that a KDA benefits is gonna do for our customers is get private option quotes, and then, maybe it's, like, just, maybe the insurance company will say, yeah, we'll ensure this same benefit that you're, required had the exact same benefit in a private option, and we'll do it for point nine, um, percent of payroll, instead of the state pool at one percent, and then you know you're a better risk, right, because you have somebody who, a for-profit entity, who's willing to, um, charge you less than the state option, where quickly that we get your quotes, and they say, yeah, your rate is one point two percent of payroll, but your employees will have a better experience, maybe you're happy to pay that. We don't know until we get some of these things under.
Can you tell back and forth over a period of time?
The final regulations will tell us that, it's, the state would not, would wanna make that difficult.
If you let the public and went to a private, you can't jump back to this.
We don't know today, but other states will, have rules to discourage, maybe they charge you for your premium, you know, there's, there's some sort of penalty or some sort of reason, you know, you have to I would assume the actuarial is underwriters, and, and the authority of the state will want to protect the pool from bad risk jumping in.
Yeah, and, and, and this is not an account, this is insurance, this is premium, this, you're not building a fund. This is, this is insurance, and the struggle's gonna be, you touched on it, but I want it's one percent, it's one percent, that can be shared fifty percent with the, um, with the employee. So.
Say it again?
So, it's one percent, the, the premium is one percent, let's call it a hundred dollars, just it's a hundred dollars, fifty percent premium's a hundred dollars, you have the ability to share that, the employer has the ability to share that
What that costs?
That cost fifty percent with, so fifty dollars of fifty dollars, so, the county, for instance. I'm not sure we're gonna have that option, I, you know, because of the union contract. Right?
Well, I mean, I think that's part of the discussion.
Yeah, we should get into that first, because that's my biggest question mark for this customer.
Yes.
Is, um, right on page three, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
That page is that number, Scott?
Oh, I'm sorry, the next page it says public employers and collective bargaining agreements.
Bottom right corner?
Bottom right corner.
Oh, so they didn't see it, so what page we on?
Three. The law and the draft regulations say that, um, any public employer, um, that is subject to a collective bargaining agreement as of October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, will not be required to make contributions pertaining to the paid family medical leave program until that collective bargaining agreement expires. So my first question is, uh, with your collective bargaining agreement, when was it last?
It's three laps, every three years.
And all of them were signed prior to October of twenty twenty-three?
GL is the lighters. The GL is by the end of this year.
So we'll be the big first one this year, which I think will be the first one where this really comes into play.
Couple confusing things here.
Yeah.
If that collective bargaining agreement extends beyond, the current collective bargaining, um, bargaining agreement extends beyond May of twenty twenty-six, you don't have to pay a benefit, even that person's not gonna be eligible for a benefit until that agreement is renegotiated. Um, and.
So you don't have to pay in, but they can't collect either?
Right, but, you know, again, but it depends on when these things line up, right, and, and not knowing that information, I'm generic here, the third and worst piece of this is the note at the bottom, the proposed rules say that an employer, um, can determine whether or not you deduct employees' own wages, wait, fifty percent from employees' wages or not, but you have to do the same thing for all employees. You have three collective bargain agreements, you have to treat them all equally at some point, but then, it, it is, this is a glitch that we hope will be resolved in the final regs, because otherwise, I don't even know how you do it.
And it has to be consistent with non-union.
Yeah, all employees, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's possible that your, your sort of last of the three, you, agreements to renegotiate could determine what you have to do for all your employees. Now, we hope that the authority here, that the DOL resolves this in the final regs, but as it's drafted now, it's real planning.
Well, the flip side of that, Scott, is though, that if we decided what to do with non-union, that becomes the standard, it's almost non-negotiable. As we open up a new contract, this is non-negotiable, because we can't negotiate a different rate with you, because of the rate that is set with, with non-union.
But see, the dilemma is that you can't do that, you have to follow the first rule, you have to follow the first one.
What?
Right, because the first one that comes up is gonna be determined by the last one.
Exactly.
You're gonna be, you're gonna find yourself in a cycle where you can't get out of.
Yeah.
That's why we think that this is gonna be addressed, but as of now, it's a real planning problem. Okay, this is a workshop, I'm sorry, I don't have the answers for it.
No, I, I, it sounds like you have a lot more, uh, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? You have a lot more hope that, I don't have a lot of hope that they're gonna fix anything, to be honest, because this is so screwed up.
This page here is very, very challenging to understand.
Yeah.
Everything else, there's, um, you know, we sort of understand both sides of it, this doesn't make, we don't even know how this works for an employer. Um, so, we'll, we'll see. But this is important, because I knew you had collective bargaining agreements, so I wanna put this right up.
To, to just.
Now, I know we're a long way away, maybe you're gonna get to this, and somebody applies this, are we, am I, as a, am I gonna come to you and ask for leave without pay? Are these twelve weeks they're asking for?
Well, yeah, we'll get a little bit of benefit in just one, one minute.
Okay.
Listen, if we, if we, um, so, any other questions on the collective bargaining agreements, and sort of the wrinkle that causes us in planning? So I wanna go to the next page and talk about, um, this program and, and, and how, um, how it's structured. The rate, um, is one percent of wages for the public option, capped at social security wage base, which is about a hundred and sixty-eight, a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars a year. Um, you make, uh, you have employees make over that, you will have to contribute one percent of the one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, not above that. Um, the funding, the program is funded by an employer and employee contribution split, um, with a fifty-fifty, um, is sort of the maximum. Many employers will say we're going to pay the entire one percent because of whatever their business model is. If you can imagine, some employers today have short-term disability benefit, um, and paternity benefit that might be paid, and, um, those things might be employer-funded today, and this is gonna overlap with those things eighty, ninety percent, and so maybe it's not a new cost item for them, or a very small cost impact, but for many employers, where those programs are funded by employees or through some other program. But for many employers where those programs are funded by employees or through some other program, P T O. Paid leave programs, there's a plan that needs to be done, the budget impact is um specific to each customer, each employer. The maximum benefit that somebody can get um is one hundred percent of the state average weekly wage. Today, the state's average weekly wage is one thousand, one hundred and three dollars. So nobody's going to get while they're out on paid family medical leave more than one thousand, one hundred and three dollars. Even if they, um, well, we'll show you the formula in just one second.
Even if they're on a private plan?
No, you can have overlapping private plans. And if an employer offers a short-term disability benefit today. And that program has a maximum benefit of fifteen hundred dollars a week. You could have short-term disability wraparound, paid family medical leave, and we do that in other states quite frequently. New York has this program today, Massachusetts has this program, Oregon, uh so we have. We we have experience with these types of programs, every state's a little bit different, but oftentimes employers will have a wraparound disability benefit to that wraps around the. Man is worried about.
So the maximum benefit is either your maximum weekly pay or eleven oh three, whichever is.
Not an R.
Yeah, I'll show you the, I'll show you the formula in in a couple of minutes, if that's okay, I think it will make more sense when I start you the formula. But the maximum benefit, nobody will get more than eleven hundred and three dollars in today's dollars, that will be index, of course. The maximum duration of benefit is twelve weeks. Um remember, this is um time that you can take off and get paid to care for your own medical condition. Or a family member's medical condition and family definition of family is important. Um and it's listed here, child, domestic partner's child, grandchild, these things are very, very standard until you get to the last um example. Which is an affinity relationship. An affinity relationship is somebody that you um have a significant personal bond with or is like a family member regardless of a biological or legal relationship. So this could be a roommate, this could be a neighbor, this could be a community member that you have a significant bond with. And if that person has a medical condition and you need to take time off to care for them. Then you'll be able to be eligible for this type of conversation.
We determine, we work this in dispute.
Well, if there's, so the. State pool will determine, you'll have to file a claim. And submit an accusation, this person has a significant personal bond with you. And then the state will, the state pool will adjudicate, or the carrier, if you have a private plan, will adjudicate that claim.
With the public, either one, issue is not whether or not we pay the person, issue is whether or not lose the person correct.
But then you.
The rules, in other words, it could have gone twelve weeks.
Right, they're either gonna be eligible for this benefit or not, they also maybe have overlapping eligibility with um federal. Leave regulations that, and they may not always overlap a hundred percent, you may say, well, you're eligible for um. Federal um paid medical leave unpaid, but you are, you qualify for that, but you don't qualify for this based on the rules.
But somebody took a benefit opportunity. We've seen ourselves set up the one policy. We don't care whether to get paid, we do get, you're taking twelve weeks off or, you know, for a person you believe. Have an affinity with, it's losing, it's preserving.
You're required to give them the time off and if they if they qualify for the benefit, you're required to give them the time off.
And challenging qualifications is is my question, is there an opportunity to challenge qualification?
The state will do that for you, the employer will not have an opportunity.
I guess they can because they pay the benefit.
Right. They are, they have the fiduciary.
So they will do it, that's how the state works.
So whether there's a rubber stamp there or an investigation. Okay, eligible workers, the first important thing is, and the first word is most important here is universal, all workers are gonna be eligible for. Including large employers, temporary workers, seasonal workers. Um self-employed will be able to opt in, uh so it's really all all workers in name. To be eligible for a benefit, there's uh only an income eligibility. Uh and that is, he earns six times the state average weekly wage over the first four of the. Last five completed calendar quarters, immediately preceding the first day that you um of an individual's spending here. So if somebody's made six times eleven hundred, seven thousand dollars, I'm rounding up. Um in the last year for any employer, they're going to be eligible for a benefit. And that's a really low hurdle, we think, so rather than planning on that, we assume that all employees, all workers will be eligible. But there is this, there is a small hurdle. Um we have a note under bonding, and it's really one of the things that people are gonna use this benefit for is maternity, paid maternity and paternity leave, and that's what we want the intentions. Uh. You are um eligible to use that bonding time anytime within the child's first year of life. Even if, this is the important part, uh the child was born prior to May of twenty twenty six. So let's say imagine a baby was born in July twenty twenty five. That person is not eligible for maternity benefit or P F M L benefit until May of twenty twenty six. So it's possible in year one that some employers. Bank their returning, their paid family leave time and use it on May first, there could be a little bit of a rush of claims for people that had babies in the prior twelve.
No bonding for the dotty job, nothing in there regarding.
It's a good question, I don't know the answer to that, I'm sorry. Uh, I'll have to check on it.
Okay, before you get off this page, I'll let you finish.
Okay, a couple of other things, waiting period is seven days, so the first seven days are not gonna be covered if I'm, if I have. So I'm on myself, I broke my knee hiking and um I'm going to be out of work for ten weeks, the first week I will not be eligible for a benefit. Um this week two that'll kick in. Obviously, there's paid time off and other things that I could be eligible for for those seven days, but this benefit has a seven-day waiting period for a medical leave. But for bonding leave or family leave, there's no waiting period at all, takes effect at day one.
When you say that, personal medical?
Personal medical versus family medical. And then the last note here is that there's, you know, the the reason that global leaves overlap with F M L A, federal medical leave that. And safeties, so there's a lot of relying on other regulations. Questions on this page?
Yeah, a couple of benefit durations, is that per incident or per year?
Per year.
A year.
Good question. Traditionally, short-term disability benefits, which allow a benefit maybe ten weeks, maybe twelve weeks per incident. So you could have um an illness that requires you, you could have a pregnancy in February. And get a benefit for a number of weeks and then in fall. For your knee hiking and you'd be eligible for a second benefit, but this program is twelve weeks per calendar year.
Per calendar, you know, it you could go on. September, then you wanna get in January.
That's how I understand it, we might see something.
No, uh, so if, yeah, if you're our employer, Scott, you tweak your day and you've got, you know. What can you have, like, three hundred hours of medical? Uh, sick time on the books.
It all seven hundred, right?
Seven hundred. Can you draw for hour? Sick leave, you can sick leave and this benefit at the same time?
These are the questions that require them to put in the collective bargaining agreement caveat, because you may want to resolve that. This, they'll be eligible for this benefit, whether they're also eligible for an overlapping benefit that you already provide is an open question. That would be a question for the, for your benefits, the state's not going to um.
Not.
Offset against your program, they're gonna pay the benefit.
Do you think that we have the ability to pay the difference, just individual pay fifteen hundred dollars a week? You know, they only don't love them from the benefit, we only had to pay the four of the difference.
I'm gonna stick to my professional training, which talks about insured policies. So we're, in other states, we have this program where we have a wraparound short-term disability insurance policy. Then we absolutely write it so that wraps around and doesn't, doesn't double pay. Um but for your collective bargaining agreements, it's outside my league to be able to guide something. So it makes sense, I'm not trying to dodge.
No, 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 I mean, but that's uh, that's a, that's an issue that we really need to deal with because. This could be a windfall, this guy's getting eleven hundred bucks plus his hour, you know, full, his sick leave.
Yeah, and you know, y- your sick leave is a generous program already, right? And so this is where we know that. You have some work to do, whether it's through a collective bargaining agreement or through other benefits, every employer offers some level of overlapping benefit. Even if it's just paid vacation time, you know, now you have to figure out, do you wanna keep your same paid vacation time program or do you wanna change it? Because you have to provide this benefit as well. Same thing with short-term disabilities, same thing with paid leave that you currently provide under the collective bargaining agreements. You wanna make sure that you look at the big picture and say, how are we funding this now? What happens today if an employee? Um needs to take time, personal time off, um do we have a program that supports them? Yes, you do. And do we wanna change that because we're required to do this or do we want to not change? My guess is most employers will want to make some tweaks and if it's collectively bargained, that tweak becomes a bigger deal, obviously. Private employers with no collective bargaining might say um. Yeah, we provide a short-term disability benefit now, we're gonna stop doing that, we're just gonna offer this, very simple. Or we wanna do a wraparound, but you guys are in a unique situation, it takes a little bit more attention. Um on the next page, uh we talked about uh premium remittance for uh the state pool. Effective January first, you'll have to start remitting premium one percent of wages to the state's uh reserve beginning on January first. Small, there's a special, some exceptions for small employers that don't apply to you, but we cut them in here. Um, small employers in your um community. Don't have to put in the employer contribution, they do have to payroll deduct and send in the employees fifty percent. So employees will uh have to pay the program for small employers. Um the draft rules don't have any mention of getting your money back if you end up going to a private plan. Um that's one of the things that's being worked on today, we hope. You have to pay these uh premium amounts quarterly, uh we don't know exactly the function of how that's gonna work, some version of the nine forty one, I'm assuming. Um and then again, we have this note in here again, employers' determination as to whether or not to deduct premiums from employee wages must apply to all employees. I mean, that's the second time we've mentioned that to you, but we, um, so just wanna.
And what you're saying is that the amount we get has to be the same, we can't say twenty five percent for one group and fifty for another.
Right.
Has to be the same amount for everybody.
Correct. And that, and that gets really glitchy when you have three union contracts that don't all line up yet, so that's the real problem.
Yeah, and it has to be everybody or nobody, yeah.
Draft regulations. Uh there's some question of, you know, whether you have fifteen employees or not, because if you don't have fifteen employees, you don't have to put in the employer contribution, so there's some rules about that. And there's some penalties that we have listed here if you fail to um submit the premium. I wanna talk on the next page, I wanna show you an illustration of how the benefit works, this is super confusing. Um but remember, we're talking about somebody who's making um a certain salary. And then there's a formula to determine what they're gonna get in weekly benefit while they're out on paid medical leave. And there's two parts to that benefit, um and there's a cap, the cap we already said is um. The state average weekly wage is currently eleven hundred dollars. So um if you look at these three examples here, we have somebody's annual earnings is forty thousand, seventy thousand and ninety thousand. And so what we do is we divided that by fifty two to get their weekly earnings um for each of the three columns. And then there's two parts to this benefit, the first part of the benefit is the same for everybody. It's you get ninety percent of fifty percent of the state average weekly wage. So the state average weekly wage is eleven hundred dollars, half of that is five hundred and fifty dollars. So the part one benefit for every, all three of these people is four hundred and ninety six dollars, that's a flat amount, it doesn't vary by income. Part two is income variable. Part two takes the remaining of your, the remainder of your weekly earnings, so if you just look at the forty thousand dollar columns, their weekly earnings is seven hundred and sixty nine dollars. The part one um that, part one benefit is based on half of that. The remaining weekly earnings for this person is seven sixty nine minus five fifty two, two hundred and eighteen dollars. Part two benefit says somebody's gonna get sixty six percent of that. So now that's one hundred and forty four dollars, so this individual is gonna get four hundred and ninety six dollars from part one. Hundred and forty four dollars from part two for a total of six, a benefit of six hundred and forty dollars a week. That for somebody who makes forty thousand dollars is eighty three percent income replacement.
Why didn't they just say eighty three percent? Those wages, it doesn't compute the same? Depending on the amount?
Well, it it doesn't, um actually, because the the percentage, the income replacement percentage is lower. With the higher your earnings are, so this is meant to provide better income protection for lower wage earners. So I'll show you that in just, well, if you just look across that column or that that row at the bottom. Somebody who's making ninety thousand dollars, they're gonna get the cap, they're gonna cap out eleven hundred. Uh the state average weekly wage, that's only sixty four percent of their weekly take home pay. So they don't have as much protection. As somebody who makes forty thousand dollars as a percentage of income, does that make sense?
Well, of course it does, because on a hundred, this is only fifty six, fifty seven thousand dollars a year. So I mean, it would make sense if you made ninety thousand, you're making forty thousand more than, thirty thousand more than.
Yeah, it's gonna be a bigger hit for higher incomes and so it goes to the question of whether there'll be abuse. Right, you're concerned that people are just gonna be taking twelve weeks of paid time off and I guess I wanted to talk about that a little bit. I've been talking about it a bunch and um. Been accused of being an optimist, it's fine, uh so you won't be the first, but if you think about this. Somebody who's making seven hundred and sixty nine dollars a week. To go to this program, they're gonna have to take a pay cut of, you know, a hundred and forty dollars or a hundred and thirty dollars. I'm gonna make the case that that person is gonna miss that hundred and thirty dollars and they're not going to. Quickly give it up and they're gonna, I I think they're, I I think abuse will be relatively small because that's a big part of their income. To go, and I know it's, you know, seventeen percent, but that hundred and thirty dollars is a big part of their weekly budgets, I'm gonna make the case.
Is the benefit taxable?
The benefit is, I don't know the answer, I think, yes, the benefit is taxed.
It would have to be taxable or, you know, like one, it's not taxable.
Yeah, sure, so I'm gonna make the case that for somebody to say, I'm gonna take twelve weeks of this benefit. Their weekly budget, their household budget is gonna be impacted by that loss. And if you go all the way to somebody who's making ninety thousand dollars, they're gonna have to take a six hundred dollar a week pay cut to take time off to care for their new baby. It's a significant amount of money, I'm not sure abuse is going to be as um. Yeah, I don't think the volume of abuse is gonna be as much as we're worried about. Because I think that the benefit is structured to make it just painful enough that you would wanna come back to work um when you're.
So it's not the county's responsibility or the employees' responsibility to pay the difference?
No, now you may have other agreements that require you to pay somebody time off that you may want to address, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions about this very confusing structure? Okay. Somebody can take um different types of leave. Somebody can take uh continuous leave, so if you have a new baby and you wanna stay home with that baby and take P F M L for twelve weeks, you can do that. Um if you wanted to have intermittent leave, you can do that as well. Um you can say, I'm gonna take two days a week for the next um twenty four weeks. Um and that would be intermittent leave and that would, that's fine as well, and then reduced leave is saying, maybe you're just working a reduced schedule and on leave for the rest of the week. Intermittent and reduced schedule leave um may be taken by a covered individual in increments. But it has to be a full day at a time, they can't take three hours, like F M L A, you're allowed to take hourly increments of of approved leave, here it's daily. Unless um you have reassigned. Employees on page nine, you see employees are required to give reasonable notice and so a big question is what is reasonable notice? Um and uh so that means thirty days in draft regulations is reasonable. Unless there's some other things going on um and uh that this page speaks to that.
So I suspect if they said that we want, I want staff to be a, that my baby's born. Of course, we don't know.
Sure.
Is that reasonable?
Yeah, it would take, it's like if they came to you two months from that happening and say, hey, my baby's gonna be born in two months or my wife's gonna have a baby in two months, I wanna take intermittent leave. Tuesdays and Wednesdays, so we don't have to hire daycare until I run out, that seems like reasonable notice. One, the the next thing is that the leave can't require, can't um cause the employer undue hardship, again, very vague term. Uh so the draft regulations take a stab at answering what is undue hardship mean? Um and uh there's potential that you'd be denying, that you that you could deny leave for undue hardship, but uh it's unlikely that's gonna happen for much longer. Pretty um. Employee-friendly rules here, of course, as you would imagine. Another thing that we should have talked about when we talked about budget and I forgot to, I'm sorry about that, is that you should think about. is that you should think about the cost of replacement hours for certain shift workers and so forth. And that's not in the one percent. So if you're thinking about your budget for twenty twenty-five, it's just the one percent. But if you're thinking about your budget, once the benefit is impacted, is actually in place, then you'll also have to have some sort of budget placeholder for replacing that worker shift. Yeah, it might be time and a half, or it might be temp work, but you will have additional people out. You'll have to cover their shifts and that will cost you something that you should plan for, but not for twenty twenty-five, for twenty twenty-six.
Because that can apply to the different classifications, right? Have to replace.
Yes. Right, I can imagine deputies or, or, you know, plus the folks that are, you know, required to be, you need coverage for a shift. Somebody's going to take that time off, you're going to have to pay for this program, but you're also going to have to pay for this. And that's not something the state's going to, you know, bring up or enlighten, it's sort of a, of each employer's. One other thing is, this, this program includes job protection as long as that employee has been with you for a hundred and twenty days. Remember, you may be, you may be eligible to pay a benefit two weeks after somebody starts. And in that case, you don't have to, there's no regulation that requires you to protect their employment after they get better or able to return to work. But if somebody's been with you for a hundred and twenty days, then the program includes job protection when they return to work. Unless, of course, the employee says to you, I don't have to.
Which they would never do till that payment's up.
So if they get the benefit in ninety days, if they were only out three weeks, you would never bring that, to say.
Yeah, but that's only for new hires. So talk about private plans for a second. They all allow, and the draft regulations allow you to have a private plan instead of paying into the state program. It's going to be an attractive option for many employers. Not sure about your specific, you specifically, but for others, it's going to be an attractive option. And some of the reasons it might be attractive option would be it integrates with other benefits that people have, right? So if you have short-term disability, a long-term disability with an insurance carrier, and they can also administer this thing for you, it makes the employer's experience easier, one bill, one payroll fee, et cetera. And it also makes the employee experience easier. If you call in with a claim, you're, they're going to manage all three of those benefits overlapping, and they're going to help you with everything. It's an improved experience, but it may not be the cheapest option or, or even, you don't know. That's the underwriting I mentioned earlier.
And our short-term disability is paid for by the employee.
Yes.
And they manage their own, correct? We don't file benefits over.
That's right.
And if you're an employee in that situation, applying a short-term disability policy on your own, that program becomes mu- much less valuable, because this is going to overlap the benefit. Maybe it's going to stack, maybe not, we could help look at those policies for you.
So you may have people dropping their short-term.
Yeah. Or it would become way cheaper, like discounted eighty percent or something like that. So we could talk to you about that, but your, your agent who works on this could talk to you about that. That's what I'm, I'm sure the disability programs, we expect them to get very cheap. So this, if you have a private option, it has to be equivalent to the public option. You can, you get, the substitution will be approved on the first day of the first quarter following the, the approval of your application. Remember, they're not even taking applications until January twenty twenty-six, and they're not approving applications until April of twenty twenty-six in the draft regulations. So this doesn't change anything unless we have revised, revision, which we hope to, but we don't know, doesn't change anything for twenty twenty-five. They might charge you an application fee and then they're, they're approved, and a private option will be valid for three years. Here's the important thing, if you go to a private option where the rate is, let's say, one point one percent of payroll or wages, you can't charge your employees more than that point five. Because you, with the employer, want a more expensive option, you can't penalize the employees if you do that. Does that make sense? So we have some pros and cons of a private option versus state option, and we talked about this already. We think that most employers in your situation will be on the state plan. We think a private plan provides value in other situations, but I could be wrong about that, and we'd be happy to get you a proposal. Right now, there's only one insurance carrier issuing proposals, and that's the standard. They're issuing proposals today, take effect on May of twenty twenty-six. You can imagine that's a hard thing for them to do is to underwrite and analyze risk for a year and a half or two years from now. But they are issuing quotes, every quote we've got from, for a customer so far, the rate has been one percent of wages. So they're mirroring sort of the state rate. And it's, and there are other carriers that are going to be quoting over the next six months. And at some point, you may ask a key benefits our firm to get you a proposal. And so that you have that, and so that you know the state plan is either cheaper or not, you know, or, or more expensive. And so we'd be able to do that for you as a project, even if you say, well, we probably won't do it, but that's, that's part of our job. As, as you're consulting. A couple of images here. One more, I'll tell you what I'm trying to bring home, we're trying to bring home the fact that the benefit caps out at a certain level, and the premium they have to pay in caps out at a different level, and it creates inequality. So I want to show you what we try, how we try to do that. The annual earnings on page fourteen, you'll see, you know, we have this graded scale of benefit that caps out at eleven hundred and three dollars today. So anybody who makes more than seventy-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars per year is going to get a reduced benefit as a percentage of their salary, right? So any dollar you make over that is not covered at all. So somebody making eighty-six thousand dollars has ten thousand dollars of wages that are not covered by this program. If you look at the next page.
Excuse me, it's a question I think, but if they make more than the eleven oh three, you still take that out of them? They make quarter million dollars, you still take?
That's, that's exactly where we're going, the next page, you'll see that the weight, the premium that you pay is one percent of wages up to social security wage base, which is one hundred and sixty-eight, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Not a quarter million, but caps, you, you stop paying in for over a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. And then if you look at the next page, you'll see the inequality, where a number of people will have to pay premium for something to them, for, for earnings that they're never going to get a benefit.
Stating.
Well, they use it to pay other claims, yeah. And if you have employees in this category, they're going to be unhappy about this, right? And that's a big part of this work over the, our, our project with customers, including you guys, over the next two years. We negotiate policies, we get quotes for stuff, we help with compliance, but then we also do employee engagement, employee education. So we're sitting here, and all the reactions you're having as an employer, now imagine you're an employee, and you have to be educated about what this program is, and you're taking fifty percent, you know, point five percent of my payroll for what? That's going to happen in the next few months. So we're deploying those resources as well, because obviously your employees are going to have a very similar reaction as, what am I? But they're going to get a benefit too, but the cost, the public versus private, the affinity relationship, all of these things that you're thinking about right now, your employees are going to have the same questions. And we're here to help with that. Once we see final conclusions, please. There is not, you know, we, we had these draft regulations out, and we saw employers comment by the dozen. And employers had lots of comments. We've not seen employees or workers have a similar reaction to, I'm going to have to pay point five percent of my payroll for a year and a half and get no benefit from that? Me as a worker, I have the same concerns as a worker as I do as an employer, is why, why would I want to do that? But that groundswell of concern from workers in Maine has not happened.
Well, because they're not paying.
Well, and the, and, and sort of understanding this is complicated, right?
Yeah.
And then, then there have been newspaper articles, there have been, there has been some, but it's not at this level of detail. That makes sense. So we expect at some point, your employees will have a reaction like, wait a second, we got to pay for this? But it hasn't happened, I've not noticed it happening statewide.
It's just not aware yet, right?
Yeah, forget.
Well, there's still a segment that somehow are grasping for hope that this will change enough so the burden or impact won't be as great, I think, too.
Yes, and I'm in that category of people that's hoping that's going to be nice, I'm an optimist, but I don't know. We've heard that there's talk of compromised positions on that, but not, nothing fishy. So we, we told you that we have these programs in Massachusetts now, and so what we did, our, our team, we went and got some data from Massachusetts. This is for their public option, not state, not private plans. And so if you look at page seventeen, this is for their fiscal year twenty twenty-three, to see sort of what type of benefit we're going to be paying for. So in Massachusetts in twenty twenty-three, half the benefit was to pay for, ha- ha- half the claims were to pay for somebody's own healthcare. Another twenty-seven percent was for maternity return. And so if we add those two together, that means seventy-five percent of the benefit is going to be going to pay for things that we're aware of and, you know, for their intention. And, and I'm sorry, another thirteen percent was for pregnancy, so now we're up to eighty-eight percent. Only ten percent was for care for a family member. Right? And so we think about this big, open, new concern about what, how we're going to cover these benefits, and remember, affinity is a part of the family member. In Massachusetts, it didn't happen that that was too much of a benefit. It's ten percent of the claims. And they have a military caregiver benefit as well, it was two percent.
So what's that mean?
I think it's to care for, I, I, I think it's to care for a military caregiver, it's a Massachusetts regulation, so not. You can check. So then we also looked at the Massachusetts result and we tried to see where the claims were coming in, what categories employees. You know, you'll see, remember, the benefit was mostly being, the claims were mostly for your own personal medical condition or pregnancy or maternity and paternity leave. So you expect to see a lot of benefit for people in childbearing ages, and that is exactly, those are the two biggest categories, it's twenty-one to thirty and thirty-one. This is data that we'll use when we're underwriting private plans, of course. We look at your census and we see how many employees do have each of these categories and how likely they are to have a claim, and that's part of the revenue. And the same information on page nineteen, claims by gender, and of course, the majority of these claims are for female. On page twenty, and this is the last page of information that I have, I've been answering questions for as long as you need me to. You know, how, how, how should you prepare? You have to think about budget for twenty twenty-five, and assuming right now that is a one percent impact, except because you have the state collective bargaining agreements, you have to think about when your first collective bargaining agreement expires, when your last one does, and you may need legal advice on how to manage through this with the public employer and collective bargaining arrangements issue. But I probably would wait until the final regulations are released before I spend a lot of money on that. But the problem is you have to budget for something now, right? And this is the real problem is, if it's possible, it's possible that the final regulations say you have to pay in on January first for everybody. It's possible that you have to pay in for only your non-union employees, it's possible you have some other version of that. And until we know, it's really difficult to plan for your twenty twenty-five budget. I'm a conservative person, so that's why I would budget, but you guys have to answer your own questions.
Yeah, of course, when you move our.
Yeah. You have to talk about your, with your payroll provider, if you're going to do employee deduction, you want to make sure they're ready to do that. You might want to just send an email, say, hey, I don't know who your payroll provider is, but just say, are you prepared to help us with this? Or, you know, are we set up for January first if we need to be? And then, you know, we'll keep you in the loop as what we know from private options that are out there. And then, you know, the fourth bullet is you have to evaluate current leave policies to make sure they integrate with this and that you're not overlapping costs and benefit. And then the last thing I just mentioned is you have to prepare to educate your employees about the program. And we're here to help with that. So these are our workshop slides. Almost nothing in here is our opinion, we try to keep everything from the, what's been issued by the state. The state has a website that was linked at the bottom here, with lots of the same information, the Massachusetts data we pulled in. And we've been talking to carriers, obviously, so we know a little bit about private options. This is what we know as of today. My hope is every week that we start to get track for final regulations, but I'm not, in this case, I'm not optimistic, we're going to get them this month or next month. It might be September, it might be October.
I hope that they abandon. A couple of years ago, we took this, probably tax benefit deal, it lasted a year. Any sense that this is, this could be so much groundswell from employees over this, they're going to go with this in a year?
I do not.
Not with this political climate, maybe.
No.
Well, in fact, we see states adding this program.
Yeah.
And so right now, there are thirteen states that have it, and it's growing every year. And so we think, and in some states with different political environments, programs are voluntary versus mandatory. In New Hampshire, it's a voluntary program, employers can choose to offer or not, pay, offer or not. In Vermont, the same. We see Vermont moving more towards Massachusetts and New York and Maine's model than, but New Hampshire is perfectly happy with their model. And so there are more states are going to be doing this, we don't see anybody taking more.
Do you see any, any indication that they're going to opt out of the employee? Any talk, maybe you're anything to mention to that? The employee says, I don't want, I don't want to be in your program, don't take any money out of me.
My first inclination is to say no, except for collective bargaining agreements is why I'm, is why I'm waffling a little bit. I'm sure, is because I don't know if a collective bargaining agreement can trump this somehow and be more effective as a recruiting retention tool, you know, it's already doing its job, right? You're able to use that to recruit retained employees today. And I would say no, we don't see an opt-out option. But there could be, I, I can see a path towards that happening as they're trying to solve this collective bargaining agreement problem. I'm just speaking for myself there, that's not going to release. My first inclination is to say no, there's no opt-outs. Oh, self-employed cannot do. An individual. Lot guy, you know? He can opt out, doesn't have to fit by the program, doesn't get a benefit out of it.
And the benefit is that if he stays in, then he'll get some, he'll get benefits, even though he's a.
So I may have missed a little something in the beginning, but are you following the Massachusetts model? Or any other states?
Yeah, we are, yeah, we, we have customers in Massachusetts, we have customers in New York.
I, I mean, I mean the state of Maine, are they modeling after Massachusetts for this?
I think they, I think they took what they thought was the best of all the models out there. And that includes Oregon, California, and New York.
Okay.
Massachusetts for sure.
Okay.
This is a more generous benefit than any other state in a couple of ways, one being the affinity relationship, this is the first.
And is there any other, is there any chance of the benefit max increasing?
It will, it does increase, it's indexed to the state average weekly wage, which is a published, the state of Maine publishes that.
So it could already be changing? Because this is published as twenty twenty?
Yeah, they have not released a twenty twenty-four one yet.
Okay.
At least I don't know that.
Okay.
They might have in Alaska.
So that eleven oh three may be changing to a different?
Yeah, I would think it'd be, it'd go up every year.
If that doesn't change us, we're still going to take.
It's the benefit, that's right, this is just the benefit.
Yeah.
Well, we're not going to take one percent. We're going to have to pay one percent. Pay a half a percent.
When you talk about state wage, that's, that's the benefit.
Right, the big thing is can, take. You don't have to have it. And depends what this, is the collective bargaining.
I would think it does, I think that's why that was in there is.
Exactly.
And but that, that, an exception for employers that have collective bargaining agreements only applies to public employers that have collective bargaining agreements. Private employers, hospital, for example, or manufacturer that has a collective bargaining agreement, they don't get the same leave, they don't get the same grace period.
I used to advise we got from Scott. So now we have the benefit, we have it, it's impacted by this, so we don't have to look at this solely on this benefit.
Sure, and you have to negotiate those new agreements, understanding that what this means and what the requirements are in here, and then you have to figure out what the best way to do, you know, what the best way to transition is and how that works best for both sides too.
This may be the nemesis that drives us into getting collective bargaining engagement. We've been trying to do that ourselves without hiring an agent in. We've been trying to do that ourselves without hiring an agent in. Kells, all business of Maine. What it's going on west coast.
It's gonna, it makes, it makes it more difficult to, um, is it one more thing an employer has to manage? And large employers have agents like us, um, you know, they have carrier relationships already that are here to help them. Um, and uh, you know, small employers, where they're not gonna get the attention from the insurance markets, you know, twenty-five employees, paid benefits, we have seventeen people on our team.
For the growth of your small way, it's, it's not just the cost, it's losing the employee.
So ship workers, it's gonna be, you know, a, a salary employee says, well, I'm gonna take six weeks off, I'm gonna come back, and I'm gonna have six hundred emails I gotta deal with or something, or I take two days per week off. You know, that's, you don't have to necessarily replace all their time, but ship workers are certainly the one percent plus the, um, the ship replacement cost. Sorry, uh, not, not fun stuff. I mean, you guys can all reach me through Brittany or. Here's my card.
Thank you.
Anything else for me?
You've done enough data.
Great day, guys.
We've all had a chance to review the very long contract. Uh, Michael and I had a chance to look over and we asked President House of our rep at Paychex, Mr. Park. We asked her a bunch of questions and uh, everything seems to be on with with where we hope it should be for this new system. So we wanted you to have a chance to review it and, and give a real lesson to me to some.
This seems workable and. And I move to approve the paycheck payroll system's contract as presented and authorized with Treasury to sign on behalf of.
Second. Let's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Uh, so, yeah, basically, the state went back and forth with the attorneys, and finally, they've got something that both sides agree on. They put together a final draft. Now you need to approve it, sign it, and then we can send it back and get printed and sealed copies for everybody, so. And that would be on both of those. If you have any questions or concerns, then obviously this would be the time to do it so I could relay it back to to them. But right now, it's my understanding that the state has approved what's presented in front of you. I'm gonna move to approve the credit and enhancement agreement, three versus, versus sole power, I'll see if presented.
Second motion. College in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With the approval, the community benefit agreement with three versus, three versus sole of power, I'll see if presented.
Second motion. College in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So this is, this is pretty, uh, right after that presentation, we deal with this.
Yeah, and you may not be prepared to give me a final interview as well, but as we put these together, I mean, let's start with the easy one perhaps first. Third parties, how are we gonna handle that, how we want, you know, the same type of programs last year where I just don't buy them? You've decided it's not gonna be in the budget process and thereby, um, you know, be prepared to submit something towards the end of this year, and you kind of go that same route, or did you decide to go back to the way, which was, submit what you got?
Only two hours to do the same. I'm not opposed to doing the same, but we can tweak the, we gotta, we gotta tweak this process. I don't know why that. We did this two, three years ago. I thought that process was slick. We had, we stumbled on it this year. I don't know what the problem was, but we just need to look at the process and wanting to do it now.
Yeah, I know, I think some of that is.
Evaluating and so on, so.
So, so to me, my feeling is that we keep the same process that we did last year, but we have to, excuse me, the same method. But we have to tweak the process, you know, the criteria and application, you know, all of that. But I, I, I don't have the stomach to go to how we used to do things.
Do we want to establish a amount because uh, he needs to know that fifty percent came in the budget? Last year we had eighty thousand in the group.
Eighty, and we funded forty.
Forty out of the, forty came out of the.
I mean, technically, there still would be time, but obviously I can't plug in a final number till you crew made that, so.
I feel as if it should be the same. Same monthly?
So forty, forty, and forty would come out of community benefits.
I was thinking, well, some of these agencies were awfully less than it was under, under the five or seventeen. Fifteen fifty.
I don't wanna raise it, especially. No, I, what, any days are going through. Maybe it should be the same or less.
When we came up with the, the total, I essentially looked at what we had given to all of them before. And it was around that amount, and I, I caught up because now everybody's asking for more than they did before because now we're doing it, but so that's, that's how I came up with it. You, you did find it was that close? That's what, that's around what it was. We added up what we used to give out to the park.
That's exactly how it came out.
Thousands, that's, that's how it came up. So. So I guess eighty thousand is the amount, fifty percent of the budget was.
Okay.
Now COLA, or, or the, the other portion of this, social security COLA is three point two percent.
Yeah, but I saw other, uh, I can't see that, but one hasn't been done yet for the year, specifically this two point six.
Yeah, I've seen the estimated two point six, two point seven.
Yeah.
So it's, so I, I mean, that's kind of the issue, that it is hard to know. I mean, we can plug in whatever, not just like we did last year. So I'm not, again, holding your feet to this, but to start out with, to have those initial budget presentation. Now, I'm gonna be very honest with you. I got department heads that are gonna come in and try to present to you that their non-union staff should be getting the same thing as unions. And I think this is gonna be a growing issue that you're gonna face, and I think it's going to potentially be an issue that at some point, some groups of employees started exploring options. I'm not using that as a threat, I'm just, that's what I'm hearing from people. Um, and I know we brought it up in a couple of our interviews and for, for HR people and people from outside kind of said, you usually don't see that as well. You don't usually see such a vast disparity between non-union, union to that very purpose. So, I'm not arguing for you either way, I'm just, those are the things that are gonna come up as part of this discussion, but no.
What's the union?
Well, it's them, but seven and six now, I think next year going forward.
The sheriffs will be six?
And of course, we haven't done jail, so we don't know when that's gonna be done.
What's happened?
See, I think we had put them back to six as well. So I think, I thought we dropped that, yeah, but didn't we drop them in the second, third year, I thought.
The front load.
Yeah. Well, and we did a change, so when I say COLA, remember we also adjusted the scale, so that's where a lot of that came in. It was front loaded year one and the adjustment of the scale.
This is a known situation, because if we try to put a number in there, then it can work a little bit high, and then we decide later we're not doing it. It's almost like, gee, you promised a state percent.
Well, so, so what we tried to do, you know, in the very beginning, remember going back a couple of years, we, we used, um, carbon funds to help fund some of this. Well, and now with the union, I mean, this is bite us on the rear end, this is all part of the, I mean, we are getting scrutinized at the municipal level, like we never have been.
You'd never do it, listen to the PAC.
Well, and.
That's the municipal employees, I mean, that's the, the taxpayers representative sitting over there. And we give them a eighteen percent increased budget, they give us back a twenty-one.
I, and I would say that basically the twenty-one, and in fact, I was floored when I went to one of the recent meetings of, of county administrators throughout the state. Many of the counties were in the twenty-plus range of their increase in budget because of all the mandated changes and the jails, the same thing. I mean, there, there are two of them that outright said, we can't comply with the law. So we can't meet the LD one cap that nobody else has now. And then they got involved, and now municipalities don't have an LD one cap. So the jail cap and our LD one, better term, the cap, are the only caps for government. So the counties are the ones that can hear.
Some counties that are not.
And they're just saying, well, we can't, we just can't.
So, so, at, because I spent some time on, on what we throw at a number. Knowing what happened last year where, you know, non-union folks are saying, hey, you're treating the union this way, you're treating us this way, so we gotta throw a number at it. In my opinion, so, but I was gonna look at, just because it's a published number, I was going, and this is just for budget preparation. I felt we should use the twenty twenty-four social security COLA, which is published, right now, at three point two percent. Now, the, that two point six is the, is, is what they're talking about for twenty, for the next one. So.
Which I was like, two, three.
So Commissioner Clark's right, and I think last year showed us that, you know, I just plugged in a number for the first meeting, and then we had the first meeting, you're gay, so that's why I'm coming to you in advance this year, so we don't have a number out there. That you then have to somehow, in that case, I have to pull back again, but I mean, it, so that's why, I'm not trying to force you one way or the other, I'm just saying.
No, you're gonna have a number to work.
It does make sense to pick a number that you start with, and, and lower is certainly better because we, we're all gonna look much better if that comes in higher, because we'll be happy because we got more and you know, you won't look like the scrutins that you would be for taking away from us, what some people would say, so I mean, it, obviously, for the beginning purposes, to see what kind of impact that would have, yes, I mean, it makes sense to you pick a number that you're all save it with based on something that, you know, wasn't just pulled out of your hat.
No, something real.
Yeah, and, and, and then you would have discussions going there.
If, if you have a number two point six, three point two, that would be one of them. It's, I won't say it's insignificant, it's so low that it really doesn't have the impact of what we're trying to do as what is the goal of going to do with the budget, because we only had two and a half percent. If we didn't put anything in. And then we got all done, it's okay, we're gonna put a, a real number in there. We're gonna put the two, the three, the five, whatever the real number is, add it to it. My point is, is that I think we could better be, better for three point two, we get done with this budget for non-union people.
I'm not saying that, I, I.
Just saying that, and the problem is it sends out, sends out the wrong message. I can, you can say right now, how many people are sitting here in this room? That's just a number to use, Michael, don't, don't take that number seriously, but that number's gonna be up to the non-union people. All of a sudden, that becomes cast and stone. Shame on you guys for giving eleven percent to the controlmen and three, three percent of us.
Well, the discussion back then is also, you know, there's percentages, and then there's also the market too. And those were, you know, those numbers were there because of the market. You know, or that's the way it was represented to us anyways, but so you're saying that there should be a higher number there than I'm suggesting?
I'm saying either don't put anything in, a higher number in there. Two point six or three point two.
Well, if you put a higher, it's, it's. Yeah, it's not gonna go back down.
It's never gonna go back down.
Sure.
And it should.
Yeah.
Right here, now, we should, we're gonna tell employees that we've been calling some bad too, hopefully. Got percentages that are awfully under the, the union. That would be what the union is, I would say, it would be substantially about two point six.
I'm not arguing with two point six. I, I'm arguing on three point two because it's a published number, and we've gotta have some place to start.
Don't argue. There's, I mean, I already had this argument before, and I'm not gonna change. Okay, it's a cost of living adjustment. It isn't your raise. It's a cost of living adjustment. You guys have all these steps built in, all this, you get your, you're getting your raise on.
That is.
Right? Am I wrong?
I don't have any steps.
You have no steps. Atticizing to the other.
The non-exempt employees aren't gonna be on scale, so.
Our, which ones?
The non-exempt.
Supervisors?
So it would be a lot of the more administrators. Things like that would be basically all, we're gonna get is whatever you determine the cost of.
Everybody's on the step, everybody, every exempt employee is on the step, union, non-union. So in s, make that argument to the non-union, when you're giving the union who has steps higher, higher than the possibly joining union. No, no?
No, and to be honest with you, those are, those are the conversations that are occurring right now. I mean, as of even the last staffing we had, people are starting to look at that, and I'm not saying that to scare anybody or to throw it out there, it's just those are the conversations that are taking place, which have increased more since when I've come here, just in two years. Now, will they ever do that? I don't know, but I mean, those are the conversations that are being had, just as the messenger to relay that back to you.
I guess it's a cycle, which was go out, you, you, non-union employees used to be. They gave up the, I guess, if it's a pendulum, it spins back and forth, it never regains.
Well.
I can tell you that the discussion we had this morning, regards to the DA's secretary, would not have occurred at that many union position. We could not have, we did not have the discretion to modify, that we'd have to follow that, whether it improves their benefit or not. You're just as guilty for violating the contract, for proving you broke contracts, you have not met it, and so that's a, that's an issue the employees have to consider when they're thinking about unionizing. It is, that's it, you're locked into now, an agreement, we have to follow this statute. Anyways, I'm saying nothing at three point five percent. So it wants two point six to three point two. I want three. Or three.
Well, here's my motion. I'm gonna move to use the twenty twenty-four social security COLA, a three point two percent for non-union positions. And to use the same community benefits grant process for a third party, I put them both in the same motion as we did in twenty twenty-three, and I'll separate it if.
Be clear, did you say three point two?
Yes, which is the twenty twenty-four social security COLA.
All right, I'll second it. So the, so essentially supervisors aren't on any steps, right? So how many employees are you talking about?
Probably.
People like the E ma assistant, is he on a scale, the assistant? E ma assistant.
Yeah, right, he would be on scale.
Only is anybody except the jail administrator that isn't a department, correct?
Daniel's just department, that's it. Daniel's not except.
Yeah, jail administrator is not on a scale. He's not.
Oh. Jail administrator.
Shepard is.
Jail administrator is not on a scale.
Right, that's what I'm saying. He's the only one that's not a department, that's not on a scale.
Banyan wouldn't be on the scale.
Banyan is not. So, what, what's it? Eight?
I mean, if I had to guess, I'd say around a dozen or maybe less, but.
That now.
Are you talking not on a scale?
So they're saying you're basically not, your, your hourly wage isn't, yeah, isn't based on the scale. So we don't fall into one of those positions that are listed in the non-exempt scale.
And in difference to John, what's happening is you're not gonna get a step increase if you're on a scale. So, you know, Dennis Chuck don't get a step increase, they get a, they get the COLA, that's it. Well, to me, that's part of the problem.
So what we've kind of internally had discussions about is at some point, do you look at those merit-based systems? But that's not just something you say, we're gonna just do it, we're gonna throw another two percent in there, because then you really do have to have some criteria or some. To really make that distinction.
And make it effective.
Yeah.
And I can tell you that we, we have a criteria for evaluating the employees. Since we sell. We never were able to get one for the department. You can't use the same one that is. So my point is that if we said we're gonna do a global, you know, review of department head salaries, I don't know what the hell we use for, you know, for process.
Well, and here's what, uh, the reason for my three point two. That's basically. Budgeting number, basically the floor, as we have learned through the VAC process. We've gotta start somewhere. And I, I'm just trying to start from a published number. And, you know, I don't anticipate this going down. It's certain, like, our experience is that it is not. But if we threw some big number in there. I think the experience would be the same and we would have. I don't know. To me, this is setting a floor, not a seal.
You want three, what was it, three point two, I tease fine, three point two? We'll do it. All of them. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, I'm opposed.
Alright, thank you. And obviously, there'll be more discussions, more questions probably, because those are the most obvious ones that, uh, that come up at this point.
Are you, you published somewhere along, you published a calendar for your process?
Yep.
When is things, the additional proposal due to you?
So all, all the initial proposals are supposed to be invited in the next week. And then the first ones will be meeting, the people before the first meeting, it would be on the sixth.
You take their initial proposal, send that with them and.
Yeah, go through. So, and we're gonna be kind of, they've all been explained to them, the ones presented earlier, obviously, we start with those proposals first and plug in. These payable numbers and go over everything else with them. So we meet with those first. So likely, the first group will be meeting in a very condensed time period, either sometime next week or first, very first of the following week to, uh. To kind of go through what their final actual proposal is that you're gonna.
So do you share their initial proposal or wait till you come to something?
So usually, I try to meet with them first, and if there's any big change, I mean, unless I see something that's blatantly, obviously wrong, or something that I just know for sure. Isn't gonna be discussed, I don't try to cut things back. I may make recommendations and we come to agreement. But I don't just unilaterally just kind of cut something out. Uh, and I may say to you, I may say to them, and, and then turn around and say to you as well, I think this is. Needs to be changed, or something you need to get serious consideration about. But generally, I think we try to work out what the department heads and if they're can present a logical argument for why something should, then. But certainly, my original instructions to them at the very beginning of this process was. That, in a bum out of term, you can correct it for the record, but county commissioners likely do not want to have another double-digit increase percentage. It's not that be preferred. And, and obviously, any major changes should be more program in nature, not just additions or things like that. So they. Try to keep your regular changes that are built in at kind of what the anticipated cost to. Allow would be, whether it's just colas or whatever. So generally speaking, that's where you're, you're gonna come from. And you'll see some departments have other requirements or added things, and then of course, the, the ones that we negotiated other stuff with anyway, we've gotta plug in those to start with, so.
And then, one thing about that, you know, I think we need to really work, VAC members, we need to really. Work to make sure that we have a, a full complement of VAC members.
Yeah, I do need the other two dates from, cause ideally, I'd like to advertise on there once, so we don't have to pay as much, but if I have to, I'll, I can separate.
Do you have to, oh.
Yeah, cause it's supposed to advertise in the paper as well.
I'm ready today, we'll get to it.
Okay.
Can you have?
Yeah, I have my work.
And, uh, note, it's been a, a lack of it, but short emphasize documentation for the. You know, for the department heads' request. There are things like, uh. Used to be. From the sheriff's department, there used to be a, one report of all the IT stuff. And that's gonna be a little, little disjunctive now because some of it's in there, some of it's in Chuck's, but for us to understand. This is, there's gonna be some maintenance and service fees in this, this year that were in previous ones.
Yeah, for me, I have a, I have a one-page summary of everything that.
Does it tend to sheriff's departments?
Uh, anything that I do for the sheriff's department.
But there are others that they.
But they do have other, mainly stillmen. But, uh, my biggest increases are gonna be trying to determine what. We do about things that expire in two thousand twenty eight, two thousand twenty nine, that we approved and are four or five years out. A lot of these would be reserves and capitals are where you're likely to seize them. That's what I'm saying, changes because we, we won't have the offer to fill that in anymore.
Well, my feeling there is that we need to start thinking, you know, that's why I think this budget here is gonna be important, is that we have to start. Now. Budgeting those things, which is gonna.
And I'm lying, I have every, one of those, I probably have about eight to ten of them.
Which is gonna impact this budget, the software.
Future.
The future.
And all department heads were given that instruction as well, is that they, with the understanding of our would end, that they needed to start. Including that in their budget and really have a capital budget present, to present to you this year as well, even if that's just their reserve accounts, but something that's showing. We're starting to set aside money for the future, so.
It's gonna be tough because there was decisions made, often purchase things during this last year, year and a half and whatnot, that's gonna come back to.
Oh, we knew that and.
No, you didn't, you didn't consider it when you, when you bought them.
Well, we talked about it. That's why Chuck is mentioning.
Already is. And my big area is cyber, a whole new area, cybersecurity, Banyan and his area. We have quite a few different software packages and improvements that have to do with cybersecurity, and it's stuff that we can't ignore.
Is that it?
Let's do our stuff.
Ready for execution.
Dennis has got his hand.
Yeah, I'm ready to make a recommendation, if you got a minute before this.
Uh, looked over these. Proposals. Closely. Northeast paving office, no detail. The separation of, of Dukas, the ultra bid was for a, uh, complete replacement of the DA's army, uh, which. Jared said minor might not be necessary, but he didn't close the price. That's the reason he just said two. Two prices here, the base, the base and the alternate. And, uh, given that information, I think. The only recommendation I can make is for, uh, the county to engage Eaton Paving. For the one hundred and six thousand four hundred and thirty dollars.
And is that? That good? I, I mean, there was such disparity there, worried.
I asked him about it. He's, he's including the same milling and, and approaches the other seats, I guess they just want the work. I, my information around tells me that this is, they're very aggressive competitors, they've been getting a lot of work. This way, let's, let's take advantage.
Well, I live in a private subdivision and last year we put our subdivision road on top of the. The numbers, what was highest this, but the percentage of Dukas and Eaton would say. Like I say, Eaton's very aggressive.
Like thirty-five percent higher as well.
And they were, it's actually two lifts.
Yeah, and I've seen their work down, downtown and at the, uh, Hereford, Mahone, Ellsworth as well, they did. Wow, they were almost impressive.
Okay, so I'm gonna move to accept the paving bid from Eaton, what is that, Eaton?
Eaton Paving.
Incorporated.
Uh, Eaton Paving and Escavation LLC.
Uh, Eaton Paving, uh, Escavation LLC in the summer. One hundred and six thousand four hundred and thirty dollars, uh, which such, which such sum to be paid from, uh, our profanest recommend.
So I don't know, just, just in favor?
What's that, three forty or four thirty? Cause I thought somebody had said three forty. Yeah, four thirty, okay.
Yeah, one oh six, four thirty.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 That's a, that's a signature for each.
The origin copies of all that stuff, get back in.
And gentlemen, one more item off of our capital plan. Your plan?
Yeah, we'll give us the, by the way.
I haven't, I, I thought I would let the dust settle on these. Article projects that we have to avoid, not just avoid confusion, but to also provide a little separation. Because it's gonna, it's gonna be altered by at least three big ticket items in the.
Would you just say, Dennis?
The, uh, the revised capital plan is gonna have three major items this year. That are not gonna be on it anymore, scratch out, so. And I'll see if I copy them.
And the other two big ticket items?
Yes, the, the steps.
And they're not paid for yet, they're not taken off the list. They've been. Accounted for yet.
On the green line list?
Yeah.
Actually, items that belong to Dennis are not updated on there. Only because I hadn't had a chance to talk with Dennis when I was working on it. So.
What's the value of those two remaining projects?
About five hundred?
So I don't, I, I.
So were you talking about phase two as well? Cause we, yeah, so I don't, Monica, you haven't really calculated in phase two at all, cause commissioners haven't.
Because of the.
That has been presented to them, like, correct?
That's, that's not even on that.
Yeah, so that's not even on that list.
So it's been approved, that is, the two forty-five, plus like a one oh five, and these are rough numbers. So for about, uh, three hundred and sixty thousand.
And I, I still need to talk to you about generators as well, so.
Right, and we have the.
We'll have that talk.
Yes.
Then I can do more.
This month.
Alright.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And you're supposed to, you're about to air that.
I'm gonna move to go on executive, executive session, but I'm gonna say title one. Uh, section four oh five, six A for an exempt employee evaluation.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're coming out of an executive session with nothing to report. And. Uh, county administrator comments.
So just to mention a note, uh, I did forward to you a copy of the email of, of a nonprofit that was looking for discussion about opera and stuff. Providing me with a response, I thought, where you guys are at. And that will continue to be case unless I give it to me, otherwise, I know there was a discussion about maybe revisiting this at some point, and. I guess that's the question, but I'm, I'm waiting to really get guidance from all of you of if or when you wanna do that, so.
We need to be farther down the. Budgetary process to make that decision, but I'd also, you know, bad examples, like a perfect example for them to apply for, uh.
Yeah, for the other, yeah, can you say?
Is there not a fifteen? Is that eliminated for today?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, okay, so, I mean, that'll continue to be my response for now, and, uh, you know, when you're ready, just let me know.
Okay. Suggestion or comments for future gen items?
Just going that I made earlier about the VAC, we really need. Uh, Commissioner Clark was right on what we, you know.
You, you've already set a date, when, when did you have the? No, wait, it's September?
No. It was August, uh, sorry. August twenty first.
Twenty first?
Two P M.
Okay, so we should be having a second meeting twentieth, Michael?
Yeah, I'll see the six and twenty, yeah, should, well, yes, yeah, yeah.
So if I set one o'clock afternoon in this room on August twentieth for district one?
Twenty, I knew.
No, about one o'clock, one o'clock. Trying to give you an answer today.
I appreciate it.
The only, uh. Couple things, uh, Michael, when you're, uh, John, you scheduled. Second, think about, uh, like the bidding that we did today. Perhaps moving that up on the agenda, so, A. If somebody comes here and wants to see how we did, they'll have to wait all day. Second of all, it gives the department a time to review, review it, so if you could do that. And the other thing, I'm not sure was, was it you, Michael, or, anyway, so. The minutes, I'd like to see some narrative, I know that, you know, Robert Sturz was says, it's, we all recorded what was done, what we said, but. I'd like to see some narrative in the minutes with regas, especially issues where a motion might not even be taken. Good example today is that we didn't take, we didn't take any action on request for rooms. And so, but that is an agenda item. So that's just a quick narrative saying that no action taken because we're going to have a work session on. You know what I mean? And it's just quick, so as you read that agenda, you understand. Why we didn't act on this agenda item, and then if there's an agenda item that. Motion looks so contrary to what the issue was, you understand why.
So you'll probably have noticed over the last few weeks, uh, since Brittany started doing, she's been trying to do that. This past week, we just ran out of time. Uh, because we've been interviewing candidates, which she's been involved with. And like I said, the last week, we were down persons, we were really down two people last week, so all of us were really scrambling to try to get everything. Well, she just had to be outside, so.
Oh, Brittany?
So, basically, we got to Thursday afternoon and it was like, alright, well, we gotta get it done, so at the minimum, you've gotta have the motions and all that. Normally, that wouldn't be the case, and I suspect that it would get back to where it was going with that, which was. But if you look back to before, and even, even before I was doing them for that pro on period, I mean, that's all you used to do was basically have. motions and that was it. So we are working in that direction and, well, can you continue to do so with this last meeting? That's why, that's why I just, just ran out of time.
And it should be very brief.
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing. I mean, it's a, it's a balance, sometimes, and, and I'll be honest with you, Brittany and I will sit there, she'll write something up and say. You know, which version of this should we go with, you know, because one obviously has a lot more to it. But do you need that? Not, and, and it's a kind of just, yeah, we, we look at it and say, well, this is really, as, as Commissioner Clark said, really critical that this information be noted, so that people understand why something happened or didn't happen. Versus just us putting words in there for the sake of adding to the agenda to make it longer, so, I mean, the minutes to make it longer, so.
I'll tell you. Twenty-five years ago, it used to be so bad though, that, I mean, if you made a off-hell comment at jokingly, six thousand minutes, so I mean. Getting away from that was a good one too. Getting away from that was a good one, too. Getting a little something.
Well, I mean, we could always look at A I and have an A I do all the minutes and have it verbatim if you wanted, but I don't think that's the direction.
Oh, I mean, Robert rules, as you're supposed to, what you did and what you said, but.
No, but I mean, I, I don't think we, I don't think we disagree with what you, your comments, it just, literally, that was the reason we just ran out of time this week.
All right, that's it, I'll move to John. Second? Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.